That she would be.
Okay, you're live.
Yes, Vice President.
George, sorry, George.
Looking at our Vice President.
Sorry.
Welcome.
I don't have the hammer.
You don't have a hammer.
Welcome, everyone, to this formal meeting of a special Harbor Commission meeting to discuss our master plan and results from some of the workshops we had in the past. So with that, I'd like to open the meeting and we, I'm sorry, strategic. Thank you. I just, can I pass down? So with that, do we do a roll call?
Mr. Domrot.
Here.
Mr. Zemke.
Here.
Mr. Mathieu.
Here.
Mr. Chen Corley.
Present.
If we could stand and do pugilisms, Virginia, would you like to do this?
Go ahead.
To the Republic, who it stands.
Martin? Oh, let's see, do we want to introduce people from the sitting back here? We do have staff attending, so thank you, staff.
We only have one staff.
The floor is yours.
Good morning, everybody. Nice to see you again. What we have today, and it's going to be on this screen over here, is the strategic plan. You hopefully would see the copy earlier so you could review it. We're, this meeting will be a lot different from the previous one, but pretty much reviewing the plan. And what I'd like to do is just kind of go through page by page. I'm gonna move pretty quickly through the front where we like have a cover, a table of contents, et cetera. If I'm going too fast and you want to talk about something or edit something or comment, stop me. Otherwise, we'll blitz through the front pretty quickly and get to the meatier parts. If we, we definitely want all your comments, like we want to hear what you think and your ideas, edits, comments, questions. If we get to a point where we're like wordsmithing and debating the fine points, we'll just take your comments, we'll take them away and bring it back. So we're not going to sit here and wordsmith a sentence today. So we're going to go through the plan. We're also going to pause after the plan and go through a little exercise more similar to what we did last time, a single exercise where we're going to talk about what are the priorities in the plan and what will look different in your minds if the plan, you know, once it's approved? What will we be doing differently, more of, less of, et cetera? And the point of that exercise is, there's a lot of details here and there will be even more when we have a work plan. After we're done with this, staff will make a work plan to make this real in the world. I'd like this whole board to come to agreement, hopefully, on what are the most important priorities in the plan, what are the key strategies that you're going to pursue, and what will look different after the plan is completed next year from now. So we'll do that exercise. A couple of other notes, I think I just mentioned it. This is quote, sort of the board part of the plan, the mission, vision, values, goals, objectives. It's the board's direction to itself, to the staff, to the public, what you want to do, what are your goals and objectives in the coming years. Once this is done, staff will develop, develop, just like last time, a work plan to get them. We already mentioned that. One other just quick note, in developing this plan, we had taken all the, all the inputs we had, including some different reports you have on, that were provided to me by staff, all the interview comments, all the comments in the workshop, we transcribed all of them, we organized them by topic, and we developed the plan out of all of that input. We didn't just invent anything, you know? So it's all based on those notes and those detailed comments in my view. With that, I think we're ready to go. And we do have a cover here. You can see the whole thing right there. That's just a fragment so I can type. Any comments or do we move on? It's a great picture. We have the Board of Commissioners.
Get a comment.
Yep, go ahead.
Um, great picture. Completely concur. Definitely shows kind of the main purpose of the harbor. Would a collage of two or three pictures that would emphasize the different mission statements be effective also? In other words, fishing harbor, the recreation part, a little bit about maybe the commercial, the restaurant, I mean, you know, kind of demonstrating the different aspects of the harbor and, and what the strategic plan refers to. I don't know. I mean, I don't know what those pictures would look like, but.
We do have pictures throughout the plan that cover those.
Okay, well, maybe, yeah, maybe that's okay.
They do appear. I think it would be less effective as a cover because it's
Too busy.
than a bunch of pizzas.
Great, thank you.
Shall we move on? But it's a good thought and it is covered. Board of Commissioners is in there. You have a paper version in front of you in case we misspelled something. Staff Leadership. Fulton. Moving on to Table of Content, similarly. We will keep moving. The first page that is, here's just some pictures. Again, there's a fair, a moderate number of pictures, trying to fill a variety. The introduction is really, the very front, I'll just say, is really not the working part of the plan. It's obvious. It's just so it's a self, a complete document. So if someone picks it up who doesn't know you, how did we make the plan? I see a typo right here. We'll get rid of that. Just how did we develop the plan? What did we do? Et cetera. We'll move on. The background, the background's kind of split into two pieces. We have a pillar point piece, again, with quite a few photos similar to what you were asking for. And just, again, meant to just explain enough that they have some idea of who you are, what your history is, and what you do. Really not meant for this board or this staff, but meant for the general public, someone who might read it. So that we have the pillar point page, and then we have the oyster point page, and then we have some, a little collage, just like we were talking about, and a little, a little call out for each. You know, in the blue on the oyster point page, which is page number five, kind of summarize all the things you do, like in a, not being complete, but just to give people a general idea. Do a lot of things.
On unless some stop me.
Ask a quick question. I saw, okay, so I don't even know how much we want to focus on. I like the little blue part, Port Oyster Point, but should we add in there something about how we partner with Weta to manage the, really the only real public ferry terminal in San Diego, which is, you know, the, it's that second picture, that middle part, that middle picture.
She's up above in there.
Support daily ferry service in East Bay.
Yeah, but, okay, I just think that, I get it, I get that. I'm just wondering if.
I could add a sentence.
I mean, it doesn't have to be in the blue part, but like somewhere in there that talks about how we partner with Weta, essentially. There's Water Emergency Transportation Authority. Yeah, only because I think that's an important partnership for public safety and also transportation.
And I'm typing here just so you can see what we're capturing and whatnot, you know? So we're capturing this idea. We'll get this done.
I don't know if you want this feedback now as we're going.
Absolutely. Yeah, because once we move on, hopefully, we're not.
Yeah.
W E D A.
W E.
W E D A.
E A. W E T A.
All in doubt.
Yeah.
One C. And I will, Jim will get together and say a proper sentence.
We did all one time.
Strategic framework is just, again, meant to explain the pieces of the strategic plan for outsiders. We've talked about all these things. I'll move on. Mission, vision, and values. This is where we get into the detail of it. Just to orient you to the page, we have the current mission statement at the top, a proposed mission statement that I personally thought was best, and I think staff I talked to did, and then another option that's kind of similar. We had gotten a number of comments from people. I want to point out, if you go to the lower part of the page where it says, below are some considerations to help evaluate the mission statement. A lot of times what people do is they just say, I like this, I like that, or I don't like this, I don't like that. Here's a little bit less subjective, some sort of objective, more objective ways you can look at it, the purpose, what the district does, who you serve, and what I call success, or how do you measure success. And you can see I sort of divided up the mission statement by those things. So the current one, the Harbor District provides fiscally and environmentally responsible stewardship. I call that success. How do you know if you're doing something good? It's fiscally and environmentally responsible, and then of its maritime resources, emergency response, and public access. So you have purpose and success, but you don't have what there and you don't have who you serve. In the proposed version below, it, I'll read it to you, provide open, accessible, and well-maintained public marine facilities that proactively encourage and support. That's a sign of success if you do it proactively and support. Commercial and recreational boating, healthy outdoor activities, environmental stewardship, and a superior maritime search and rescue capability. That's a mixture of the things that you're here to do, your purpose and success. There is no who. I talked with staff a little bit and wrestled with my own team about how to get who in there, but your who is potentially so many people, we decided to leave it out. It's the county, it's local, the boat people, it's people from the Central Valley, you know?
Also the public.
It's just anybody who's.
Who's in there basically saying.
So I'm not going to read the third one. It's actually somewhat similar. They were kind of built around each other a little bit. I would like to just propose that we look at the second one at a certain point.
I have a bias to the educational opportunity, so I like the inclusion of that. That's in the, the one that you're not going to read.
Okay. That doesn't mean we couldn't.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. I mean, I think that's, it has a lot of the other one, that the other one has, but that, that educational opportunity is kind of the new thing that we want to focus on.
So our, in response to that, I had another comment, too, of removing or replacing environmental stewardship with public education.
Well, I don't know.
You need both. I think you need both. Go ahead. No, that has all the other.
Yeah, we have to focus on everything for the strategic plan, but I agree with you that.
I started with saying that my bias is the educational. I know you guys all bring in, you know, the other components, but yeah, they all have to.
And our educational, correct me, but our educational focus is environmental stewardship and taking care of our oceans and everything else. By encouraging environmental stewardship, that leaves the border wide open to enable the district to stay within the mission statement and also pursue the education, because it's education on.
It's a subset.
Environmental stewardship and safety through the encouragement is what.
Okay.
I think that's excellent, but I think education needs to be called out because otherwise it gets lost with the beach cleanup. And it, and I think their right hand, left hand, you can't have a whole unit without both of them, but you need to realize they are slightly different as well. And I think the education part that Georgia and I have been talking about also includes working with universities and research, which is different from environmental stewardship. So I think they're both. I mean, one of the, one of the best examples, and it's cheap, of environmental stewardship and education is on a little path in Pacifica where schools have created little teeny signs that are on stakes along the path that show what you might see while you're walking that path. And that's, that's pretty much education, but it's also helping encourage people to protect the environment. So I think we need both. I know I tend to be long-winded, so that's why I'm arguing for both.
It's one of the problems I have with the education thing is, we thought about the education because we thought it was going to be funded by an outside group. I look at the revenues that we have for the Harbor District and so many things that we can't fund now, for us to get too involved in the education aspect and commit money and development funds to that, that we don't have for other projects, I think is not responsible. So we have to figure out, do we have the outside funding locked in 100% to pursue this? And if not, let's not take on something that we can't responsibly fund while we're operating as a regular Harbor District.
This doesn't, this doesn't refer to the priorities. I think it just over, in general, educating the public to what's happening at the harbor is important upon it. We do, do some of that already. This doesn't lay out saying we must do that. It's kind of, it's not laying out any priorities in here at this point, so I don't know.
And we do, we do have the signs already that talk about the fishing and whatnot. That, I believe that's Noah funded that we've gotten in the past.
I agree, but I think what's in our mission statement is what grandhorses read, too. And I think if we don't have it there, then they're going to say, oh, are you taking on something new? And we can say, no, it's been part of our tradition for the last 50 years. We're simply, in this update of our mission statement, we're making it clearer for the public and for the people who might be getting this. When we come down to budget priorities, that's you in Virginia tomorrow.
One thought that I would drop in here as an outsider, I think you guys have made all the main points to be discussed, but I would question whether it's your mission to do education or whether it could be part of your vision, part of a priority, part of a goal or an objective. And a mission is a very focused thing, and it, let's just say, for whatever reason, education was the most important thing right at the moment, or one of the more important things that you were going to focus on, an important program. It might not appear in the mission in any case. If that is not what your underlying purpose is, and if the education helps steel, helps promote environmental stewardship or other types of education, as Catherine said, it could appear somewhere else. I'm just dropping that in.
Maybe we should be discussing then why mission vision and values are all in one, and maybe they should be somewhat separate.
Like what should be separate?
Mission, vision, and value. What you just said was education may not be, may not need to be included under each one of those. So where are we going to include it? I certainly think our vision and our values are education, and mission is acting out the vision and value. Mission is acting out the vision and the values. First, you have to have the vision, then you figure out what you're doing.
I mean, it's all up to you. We can drop in education or not. I'm simply pointing out, like, there's a lot of things you do that don't show up in the mission that are important, like good public outreach, it's sort of related to education. It doesn't show up in your mission, and you've always done it, and it may even be partly related to the broader education. But anyone who hasn't, I'm sure the board spoke enough about this?
Just one other comment. Education, I think, is vital for the district. It's part of our goals is to provide education on what we do, the environment, so safe and clean harbor, ocean safety. It's all very, it's very important, and it's very top goal. But if you go back to our statute, then it's to maintain a marina or a harbor. If we don't take on the activity of a marine science center or marine education, can we still achieve our statutory responsibility of maintaining the harbor? And I say, yes, we can. So I think it's, if we add, if we do add education to the mission statement, we have to add what kind of education? So it flows, you know, healthy outdoor activities, environmental steward, blank education, and superior maritime authority, if we're going to do our search and rescue, if we're going to do it. But I think if we just, if, I think it's covered in the current proposed mission statement, but we also should have it in our goals. And the goal of the district, our, and direction to the staff would be to develop that education and what that means, and come back to the board. And we already have a ad hoc committee working on the science center or the aspect of that with the educational institutions. So my, I wouldn't put it in there, but I'm not saying we can't. But if we do put it in there, we need to have at least a two phrase, two-word phrase in there for education. And now.
Not just, I'm thinking, what's the other word going to be? But we'll come up with something. Or not put it in there. I mean, you're.
As an outsider, I think what Jim was saying about the fundamental aspect of your statutory responsibility, kind of, that's what gets the.
Well, it has to be in there, I think.
Education has.
No, 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 I'm sorry. Keeping focused on the fundamental mission that's basically run by statute, right? The harbor navigation codes, all the, all the things we're supposed to be doing, I think should be in there, our mission statement. I don't want someone to come back and say, oh, well, the Harbor District, you know, isn't doing what it's supposed mandated to do and, and all of this stuff. We should get rid of it. That, I, that, I don't even want to risk that. I mean, we can add stuff in there, not education, but I also agree with Tom that, you know, we have to be careful and so that we're not doing mission creep and then therefore, I don't know, cost creep, I guess.
An abundant man-made.
Well, it's not, yeah, but it's not that. I mean, because I do agree with the education piece, don't get me wrong, but I don't want us to be a target for people to say.
It's kind of like when we talk about search and rescue and marine and ocean safety. The marine and ocean safety is an educational component.
I know, but people don't associate that. But search and rescue is very different.
That's right. That's what I'm saying.
So, so I'm, I mean, I'd rather keep it broad and include it in there, but I'm not even talking about that. I agree it should be in here, but what I'm saying is we have to keep, Jim was saying, like, on our core mission, like, keep maintaining a clean and safe and environmentally stable or sustainable harbor. Yeah, I think, I know that's all in here, but I think that has to be more focused on. I, like I said, I don't want the Harbor District to be a target, people saying.
Well, I think one way to do it is, is we put an adjective in front of safety and that ocean.
Yeah.
Why don't we put that same adjective, ocean, in front of education? Because we don't want to be educating about the redwoods.
Agreed.
And so if we put a limitation on it, and so I think ocean is, is one we're already using, and that's, I mean, that's what we've been talking about all along, because education, we don't want to edu, we're not even talking about what happens in the bay, you know? It's, it's, it's maybe promoting ocean research.
That's true.
Promoting. I think it's, this is general enough to cover South Seine.
I think so, too.
That, that's what I, I don't want to ruin that either. So are you saying, are you like this second one, Catherine?
I like environmental stewardship.
I do, too. A lot.
I think, and, and I like education, harbor-related educational opportunities. I'm sort of working off the top because environmental stewardship, as I said, and educational opportunities are related, but maybe we just put, well, I don't want to say public, I don't want to say visitor, because that's clearly who we're working towards. Ocean or maritime educational opportunities.
That covers maritime, marine.
Maritime there. Can I ask before, I captured your word ocean education for now, but Bill, what do you think of this discussion? I don't think we.
Well, I mean, I, I was looking at environmental stewardship, and I kind of asked myself the question, is environmental stewardship really a core mission? It's more of a core value.
I think it's a, if I may, I think it's our core mission, because if we don't have a clean harbor, we're not, we're not providing a public harbor.
In our basic service.
So the environmental stewardship is no oil, no.
Yeah, exactly.
Garbage. So if we, we have to maintain a clean harbor. We have to, we have to do maritime search and rescue because if we don't, if our clients are dying off, we're not maintaining a good harbor. Healthy outdoor activities is all part of the harbor life. And recreational boating, commercial, we, both sides of that boating public. And then all, the all falls under, under maintaining a well-maintained public marine facility, but I kind of, a little bit off from what Martin was saying with the who, I think the who is stated there. Our who is anybody who uses our facility, so it's the public. So it's not, it doesn't restrict it to anybody, because it's open and accessible to all, and all is the public.
And not, not to open another subject, but I just thought, too, we talked about the first race of maintaining public marine facilities, but search and rescue is more of a service than a facility. So I just thought, for consideration, we may want to say, facilities and services.
And so it's environmental stewardship.
Right. I don't know. I.
Maybe we lump them all under services and leave it general. And then everybody.
I like the second one. With, I like educational opportunities. Education is so broad. I mean, by even putting out signs to leave the harbor seals alone, it's an educational opportunity, right?
And to stewardship, you have to educate yourself about the condition.
Yeah.
So they're, they're layers. So maybe.
I might actually. My, I have a beef with superior maritime emergency response, not the emergency response part, but superior.
I can see what the public, what some of the previous members of the public would do with that. That's where all our budgets.
An effective.
Also, so I'm just trying to understand how the word superior got in there first, Jim. Is that what the public put in there or?
What I use because of the pride that our staff takes in their waterman capabilities. And they, they really do, and they are superior watermen. So that's why I put the word superior there. But we can also, we can change that to a professional maritime search and rescue or.
I think.
That's.
I like professional.
Professional.
All right. In that case, where does a union come in? Are we going to be creating a whole new union?
The union was invited. No. No.
That's a good.
They're already doing it.
I'm not a gift. They're already doing it, but I know when, when I was launching the budget for sewer during COVID, the union and during the negotiations worked very hard, as well they should have, to get hazard pay, you know, because they were working on the sewers during COVID. And so they wanted permanent hazard pay for that several years. And there was a different solution that was reached, so.
I can see where, I can see where you're coming.
I under, I'm looking at the after effects of those who would read this and not understand our intent and then try to maximize. And so I like these words, but I'm trying to think, I always, I was a preschool teacher. I think about the worst possible results. And, and I, I think they're all, I mean, I'd rather have superior than professional.
The only reason I have a beef with superior, and I like the word superior, is that I just, it's these expectations. I would say, that's almost so implicit. I mean, what is superior to superior? You know, because if we're going to go out there and do search and rescue, it's going to be the best that we can provide all the time, right? But I But, um, I just, I'm looking at this from a funding standpoint, like, oh, superior. I mean, we understand what that means, so how much money is that going to require?
Now, see that, th- those, all those words are defining the capability. Superior capability, professional capability, so we want to be able to provide a professional capability that is going to have implication on the cost of that. But I, I think, you know, we got to provide, why have it if it's not going to be a professional?
Excellent. I like professional.
I like excellent, I, I worry about what the union will do, and I'll be on record with them.
Do we even have to have any adjective?
Have maritime search and res.
Yeah, that, I mean, do we even have to have an adjective here?
Well, how about effective?
I, I don't know.
That's what I said.
Our mission statement, one of the purposes of a mission statement is motivation. And without motivation for, for our organization, and so I think the adjective acts adds that, uh, motivation to it versus just and maritime search and rescue capability. And maintain a maritime search and rescue capability. So that's, that's my, our suggestion for the adjective in there.
Okay, I got it, okay.
Because it's not, we're not creating a new class, which is the biggest threat to our budget.
Yeah.
If with the word superior or professional or any other adjective that you want to put in. Julie and I have already gone to cow birds and asked those questions.
Okay.
Um, are we okay with professional, it seems like that has.
Well, Catherine doesn't like the word professional.
I don't like professional. What about responsive maritime search?
Yeah, I like that, I like responsive.
Responsive?
Yeah.
That's effective, isn't it?
And responsive maritime search and rescue capability.
No, I just, I like the.
No, I like the, I don't mind that.
When I ask, when I go out and ask for funding, so it's our mission to provide this.
That's right.
Superior search and rescue versus our mission is to provide responsive search and rescue.
Well, if you're a professional doing it, you, you want to aim towards superiority, so professional work would work too, and it helps with the funding, but.
Professional works, so professional works, superior works. Extraordinary.
Can we live with responsive, or we gotta keep going on?
I'm listening to what Jim is saying, I mean, I mean, I can see why you would want to put the word superior.
Seems like you were the one who told me.
I know, well, only because, yeah, I was, that, I mean, what does that really mean? I mean, for us, it's one thing, for someone else, it's another, and I don't know. I was the one who's hung up on the word superior.
Comment from the back of the room?
Yeah. Chris, yeah.
With the exception of. Or no other agency other than.
Us.
So in that sense, he is a superior in the motive.
However, I would have to add though, that, um, it might be better to not have any adjective, just say maritime response, because the word limited emergency response could also be put in there.
Yeah.
Because we are very limited, some days we cannot respond at all.
I mean.
Provides limited search and rescue. It's what happens, just like a police department or fire department or Coast Guard, their mission is to provide search and rescue superiors.
That's their main, but that's their main purpose.
Yeah, but they also, they also go in the bag when they're out too long and they're in sleep time, they close, they won't respond. We have to, we have to close and not respond in situations where we don't have the staff capabilities. But we're still going to strive, and our mission is still to provide superior maritime search and rescue, not only for the safety of the public, but the safety of our crew. But I understand what John's saying.
I actually agree with John, I mean, that I, you know, I wouldn't mind leaving out the adjective, but I may be in the minority here, John, but I, I totally.
No, I, I agree, maybe we don't. And, and we can just say we are the best.
Even when we interview.
And we're not, and, and, um, when we're interviewed or whatever, and our mission is to have um, so emergency search and rescue, and then we can put along a list of adjectives and adverbs.
Not our main mission, that's, that's the palm of wine, maybe that's it.
In a narrow sense, the mission is to have maritime search and rescue. You can define it in your vision, in your goals and objectives, in your priorities. I'm not against or for having any of these objectives, but if you're having trouble picking one, because of all the, all the good reasons you've mentioned, your fundamental mission is maritime search and rescue.
That's what I would just leave, is leave without the superior. I, I don't, do you really think, I mean, how many people are actually going to read this and say, oh, I'm going to not apply because the word superior is not in there? To def, to describe merit, our maritime emergency response. Sorry, sorry, I, I didn't, sorry, I didn't see.
No, I, I feel similar, my mind goes money, um, if it says superior, then you're going to have to spend more.
That, that's all I.
But it does, it does kind of sound like maybe at a certain, we already are operating at a superior level, so why not? We did, I mean, I don't know, like.
That's the only phrase in there that has an adjective. So I suggest that we put it there and then call it out to the level of, uh, that we su, the level we support, which is superior further on in the document.
So you're saying leave the word superior in there?
No, I'm saying let's take.
Get rid of that and define it later on. I would agree with that.
Well, I think that's a good idea to leave that.
Capable, instead, if you want to put it, uh, superior somewhere else, we start with capable, saying we do it. We're not doing it at night now, uh, we're hoping to get the funding for that, but, uh, capable or another word.
Be capable of superior, I would just leave it, or capable of nothing, I would go with none.
Yeah, I would go with nothing.
Hey.
I would leave it out.
End on leaving it out, um, I hate to be the one that suggests another word goes, but capability, I, I think it's completely unnecessary, um, just. At the very end.
So I'm looking at the second one, at the other option.
Oh, I didn't see that, yeah.
So I, okay, sorry, Martin, I mean, I understand we're looking at the first one, but I actually like the second.
You like the second one.
Yeah, I think. And that's our primary mission. Okay, well, we can go stay with the first one.
But if we can stick with the first one and, and it with.
And add.
And maritime search and rescue, I, I use the word capability, because that, our job is to maintain the capability.
I see what you're.
Respond.
So.
That's why I kept cap, that's why I put in capability, uh, and maritime search and rescue, to me, that doesn't mean anything. Maritime search and rescue, what?
Okay, capability, should we do capability?
Our goal is always towards capability.
Yeah, that's fine, but, but the first one also needs to have educational opportunity. Well, okay, let's see, I'm helping out, help the outdoor activities, environmental stewardship. How about after environmental stewardship, or is there a priority here?
I don't think so.
I don't, I don't either, because it's under, for either one, recreational boating, ha- healthy outdoor activities, educational opportunity, or, um, op, educational opportunities, environmental stewardship and maritime search and rescue capability.
Public education?
I like public.
Public educate, yeah, yeah, I mean, but my point is that education opportu, educational opportunities isn't in the first one.
Not in the sec, where is?
It is in the second one, near the bear, it's the.
Environmental stewardess.
Healthy act, healthy outdoor activities, public education, environmental stewardship and maritime search and rescue capability.
Yeah, that's fine.
Environmental stewardship and education.
Uh, where, so what, can you read that?
It's up on the wall if you want to look at it.
Here. So hard to see.
I would like to get rid of the word proactively, that is so nineteen nineties. Proactive, let's just say active. It's a, it's a good.
Well, how about just that encourage, well, do you even have to have an adverb in there? Why can't we just say that encourages and supports?
Like activity, I like saying we're going to be. No, actively.
Yeah.
Encourage it, support.
I mean, that would, that would include like, basically, like, no, I agree, maybe it could be viewed as the, the board, the, the full, anyone who's in the, um, involved with the harbor district as either staff or in the board, I mean, because we're actively doing that, that's, I would interpret it like that, and I'm okay with that.
So, does this do it, there, there it is, like written.
So hard to see.
That's it from this angle.
Yeah, which, well, Tom and I are at, are at a weird angle, that's.
Bit of the track change, or go back to say, show a no markup, please.
I wonder if it'll work, work better.
The other way, show no markup.
Turn off the lights, maybe.
We're getting rid of market, no markup.
Ninety-two. Yeah.
Sounds good.
Round of applause. Okay, uh, moving to vision, it's the next page. You know, for one single proposed vision, which is still out of all the different comments we have from everybody, um, which showed up in the notes. So we have one, one to look at, and they're written in the form of sort of a, a bold, short part of it, that you can sometimes use, get the bold, and then a little bit of extra text to explain what you mean. I'll just note that the vision is meant to be aspirational, it's meant to be within reach, like reasonably, you could expect to, you know, achieve this if you work at it, and you have some good fortune as well. But it, it also is meant to be a stretch, so. And so here, there it is. One thing I liked about it was it was just four things, but they're big and they're important. We always make bigger lists, but I think it's also helpful to be a little compact about it.
A question for you, in the first sentence there, we use the term balances. Um, I kind of played around with that managing, or is, I, I guess I'm trying to think what that's supposed to represent.
And balance helps explain to the public that we have equally important priorities. And we can't just fund any one thing, and, and I, um, um, so I like the idea of balance, I think everybody understands the concept of balancing it between this, in, in decision making.
Since we added in the mission statement, we made some changes there, does that, we have to reflect that in here, so ha, instead of and environmental stewardship, put a comma, and then to have and public education? But we're going to balance between all those and, you know, how we balance and.
That, that sounds like a make sense to me, but.
Oh, I, um, so how did these four get put into this order? I think it should be.
Yeah, go ahead, I, we just.
Then you're undoing balance.
Well, no, 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 I, I mean, it's just like, I think the Science Center is important and everything, but I don't think it trumps, you know, responsible, resilient management. I just remember.
I don't want to be the killjoy on the Ocean Science Center, but why is it even in here if we don't have it and we don't have funding for it? We're talking about is popular and engaging, no, that's absolutely false.
It's a vision, so it's.
It's the proposed vision.
So it's explicitly saying, these are the things we'd like to see, um, we're hoping to see, and the ones we're focusing on, trying to make real in the future.
I, I see this as a sales.
Yeah, so like, similarly, Tom, at the bottom, um, due to the district's expertise, superior management, good governance and economies of scale, all public harbors, marinas and airports in the county are now under different management.
I love.
That's, that's not real, but it's what you would hope to see.
Vision that we may want to do.
Let me tell the board, just as a measure of our success, that by including that, we have made some people at the county very nervous, because there was work going on at the airport right now that you guys may have seen, but that building that was falling down, they are now taking it down. Now, that building has been falling down for forty years. And, and they never worried about it, they just roped it off for dream machines, but now they're actually working hard on taking it down. That's a measure of our success, because they felt the need, they, they suddenly realized they're being looked at. They're no longer invisible.
Good, excellent.
So it's a kudos to Jim for putting that in, and the airport, the airports, and, and to the board for saying, yeah, why not? We can do a better job, we got the board, we got the skills, we got the staff and the talent and the manager, let's go for it.
Have any other specific edits or changes on one of the, the.
Well, I mean, I, I would, I would put, I would change the order of this. Um, I like the first one, quality accessible facilities, respond, and I like responsible resilient management should be number two. Um, a reputation for a reputation there for excellence would be number three. I like the Ocean Science Center piece, but I think it's too specific compared to every, the other three.
I think it should be education.
Education, public education in general, right? And, um, in a, like such as partnership with research and development, or, um, I don't know, I'm thinking this up, or well, partnership with ed, research, um, for research and development or environment or maritime research, whatever. well, partnership with ed- research, um, for research and development, or environment, or maritime research, whatever, maritime research environment, um, including, um, a, a visitor Ocean Science Center, or something, you know.
Clearly, you've been studying law and trying to work on putting the most words in, but I suggest.
No, I'm not trying to put the most words in there.
I, I suggest maritime education.
Yeah, that's.
Is popular and engaging, and helps the public understand ocean and fishery issues, I, I would also include place the point on that, and say marine.
Maritime can include both bay and ocean. I would avoid the term maritime and marine, because that includes shipping and vessel traffic, so my, my recommendation is coastal and, uh, coast, coastal and ocean, or coastal and marine, use the word marine, but not use maritime. Ocean slash bay, science education, so that would include, ocean slash bay, so you have both, and then.
I even like ocean, land, bay, if you can.
Aren't really.
Sure. But if you say coastal, that covers.
I like coastal.
Covers bays and.
And.
Most people, when you, when you say the coast, they're not thinking of the bay shoreline, they're thinking of the open coast, the coast kind of, you know. There's some specific.
It's okay.
The general manager's been working very hard to increase our rescue capabilities, and I would think that a vision somewhere in there now is where, um, envision, is where we should say that, uh, the, uh, envision, a, uh, a more professional, superior.
Yeah, that would, this is the place to put that word, superior, I agree.
Put, put.
And also like safety.
Yes, public safety.
Part of like the maritime, there can be, like, safety and prevention.
Why I put it in the paperwork for the nonprofit was, uh, coastal and ocean education to include, uh. I'm just reading that one, that one looks pretty good. But the other one, I was, the other, the other vision I think that's missing is we want Johnson Pier to be expanded and new, we want new floating docks, we want better ser- facilities and services for our commercial fishing and our recreational boating, so where's the vision statement for quality infrastructure that supports the fishing industry and boating?
I would even go more, a little more general than that, because I, uh, um, so, I really believe that our harbor is a driver for local economic development, for our fishing and our industry and our, I mean, you know, businesses, visitors, all of that, right? And I don't see that in here at all, and it ju- and it helps drive, um, this, the economic development brings in revenues to, not just to us, but also to the county, and to the surrounding areas, like the Half Moon Bay, or even further north, right? So I just, I don't know if we want to put that, that word in there, and then bring in like the, the fishing fleet and all these other things that would fall under the description economic development, local economic development. Because if we're not bringing in money, then it's, we've got it, because still thirty to thirty-five percent of our budget is enterprise oriented. And to me, that also means that we're, we're helping to obviously make money, but also bring in business to, to, to help us make money.
So what I see in the proposed vision is quality facilities and all the other parts that draw people to the new marina and meet the needs of visitors, vendors, and businesses, that's where you can put, to continue to be the core economic driver here, on that first line.
So for.
The next one is about education.
Do you get there? Can you just give me some specifics, so we can?
Yeah, where, where, are you, are you talking about?
I'm on, so it's top one here. So I'm talking about proposed vision, quality accessible facilities, second line under proposed vision, the first whole type thing. Um, quality accessible facilities and services, um. I like that.
Draw, draw people to the harbor and the United.
Well, what Virginia was saying is, and maybe we just put it in another place, um, but we are drawing revenue, um, to the whole area.
Yeah, we're bringing with local.
We're bringing in, we're bringing hotel guests, we're bringing.
Restaurant guests.
Restaurants, um, recreational.
Got a vision for the district?
I think it should alw- I think local economic development for the harbor should always be part of our vision, it should never even be lost, be since thirty to thirty-five percent of our revenues are enterprise oriented.
I agree.
I, well, and I like your idea of local.
Yeah, yeah, I like.
Um, because.
And I think that should be in here.
Where we're buy- why we're buying marina.
Right. And, and, and what we're gonna maybe need it for.
That are local facilities, yeah.
There's some work that that's.
So, so hard to see this, I don't know why. It's not that, I think there's just so much light to, Tom and I are at this weird angle.
That's better, there's a lot, uh, larger.
District's facilities and program, oh yeah, that's better.
And out, Rochelle can read it.
No, districts, facilities and program, no, this is better, yeah, thank. Or generate that, I can, I can, I can cover. I don't like to, to, um, I don't know, do we want to cover, do you want to put the words to cover cost? To, how about to benefit the harbor district and our, and Sam, um, to benefit the harbor district and I don't know if it's just the region, or if it's the, um, well, in. Yeah, I guess the region's fine, I mean, people, we have guests from all over this area and beyond that come here because of, I don't know, what do you think of that, can you read that? What do you think, Tom?
Because I'm a little lost with what's here, and where that's gonna go.
So is that gonna be a separate item then, Martin, economic development?
Me, if you want, that's, that's how I was understanding what you were saying, but.
Oh, I was thinking of putting it into the number, folding it into the first one.
Okay.
Quality accessible facilities and services, blah, blah, blah.
Yeah, let's.
I mean, I, I like, uh, conciseness.
That, um.
So, and meet the needs of visitors, vendors, and through economic, local economic development. So, um, so let's see, vendors and business through local, after businesses, maybe write the words, through local economic development, that generates revenue economic, in economic activity to benefit the harbor district and the region? I'm just taking this, I don't know, I'm just throwing that out there.
It could be standalone, because the first one talks about we do receive public funding and do public funding activities, we also do enterprise district, enterprise district revenues, and the goal of those enterprise re- revenues is to hopefully cover the costs.
Cost recovery.
Operations.
Yeah.
Not necessarily, our goals benefit of our revenue would be economic development, but the goal of our, why we want to make revenue is so that we can cover our operational expenses and use the tax dollars for infrastructure and other things.
That's fine, so you're saying you do number one for quality accessible.
Yeah, because.
And then number two, and I, I mean, I don't know, and then.
Our trails don't generate money, our.
That's not true.
They don't generate.
They're there, but they'll generate for the region.
That's the whole concept of local economic development, right, I mean, you know, okay, let's go to the catch, after we go to the trail, we're gonna walk Johnson Pier.
Well, I agree, I agree, bringing people in is, does add to the opportunity for economic development, but we don't necessarily provide the trail, West Trail, for that reason.
Yeah.
We do provide a lot of pu- uh, public, uh, activities and resources that we don't charge for, period.
Okay.
So that's why I think we still need to, our proposed vision needs to have that, those services and facilities we provide to the public that are free.
Okay.
But we also, part of the economic development is, we, we draw people in to generate revenues through our enterprise fund, to, and our ultimate goal of the enterprise fund is to meet or exceed our operating, uh, expenses. That's, that's, that's the vision for those revenue funds. For people to understand district enterprise facilities.
Wait a minute, let's let Julie speak.
Okay, I'm sorry.
I wanted to like, go back to what our mission statement is saying, and kind of get an idea of like how the visions that we're proposing fall underneath that mission statement, so. For example, one of the things that we have in our mission statement is encourage healthy outdoor activities. So, in our vision, how are we encouraging that? And how are we encouraging the environmental stewardship?
The first one covers, uh, could cover your first, the, the first one about encouraging healthy activities to be covered in quality accessible facilities, and you can add new words there.
Yeah.
Well, and, and so, the, the thing about economic development, I don't see that in our mission statement, I don't know where that falls.
Well, I, I think, I don't know personally, that everything you, you, you. Right now, at this time, you get there.
Yeah.
One of your priorities is economic development, and so we're calling that out here. It, that doesn't contradict your mission statement, but it doesn't have to be mentioned in the mission statement, it's a different type of of, of statement here. Um, I think, you know, same thing like, um, it doesn't say anywhere that the district should run all the harbors and airports in the, but it doesn't contradict your mission statement to do that, that's just what you're talking about doing in the coming future. So, I, I, I think that was a sensible thing to look at, we don't want to contradict your mission statement and say like, we want to build an amusement park or something, um, I was just finding.
Just support the mission statement.
Well, so, so beginning, but to Julie's point, I agree with you, Martin, but it doesn't, I think, didn't the old one talk about being, having this, being fiscally responsible to in the mission statement?
Our current mission statement.
That's its first one.
So I think that we should add that back in here.
Is your mission to be fiscally responsible?
Yeah, that's, I think it is.
Certainly, that's what LACCO said and other agencies, and, uh, but by the same token, I see that, um, the mission that we selected says to provide open, accessible, and well-maintained public facilities, implicit in that is we need money. And I, so I see the vision as enabling the mission, and we're going to do that, and we're going to do that mission by attracting the public and, um, among, and, and using all means at our disposal to bring money in to make the mission happen.
Yeah, that, so it doesn't need to be mentioned in those places, you, you can know it's a different.
I think that the mission statement, I think, is the one thing that everyone will read more than the vision statement.
I'll definitely put in fiscally responsible. One way to test the mission statement is ask yourself, if there were no district, if it didn't exist, what would people ask for? You know, why is it here? And would people say, you know, we need, in, in, in the coast side here, we need more fiscally responsible? What, what they would say is, we need a harbor, and we need a marina, and we need pathways or whatever, and that's your mission. One of the ways you do it is fiscally responsibly. Um, you could put it in, like, same thing with environmentally responsible, people may say we need an environmentally responsible marina. I don't know if they're gonna call for a fiscally responsible marina, of course, everyone wants one, they're gonna call for a marine. Um, it, it, it kind of has to be, but that's up to you, you can choose, like, do you need to emphasize it, do you want to emphasize it? You certainly don't need to.
I think it should be in the mission statement, because it's the kind of thing we compel the public when they're coming in and say, you know, we really don't care, they could, the boats are extension borders, I know, or, but we really want this for our little interest group.
Go back to the strategic framework on page six. The essential work of the district, what Martin was talking about is the mission. Fiscal responsibility, open fiscal responsibility, uh, and all, everything related to that is goals that Julie, I, and Rochelle work towards every day in the staff, and under the strategic framework, goals describe broad primary management and operations, and fiscal responsibility is one of the primary management goals for the board and the, and the general manager. I think, instead of putting another fiscally, uh, I can't remember the word we used the last time, uh, stewardship in the uh, mission statement, it's clearly something we need to do, but I think it's a, a goal, and then under that goal, we're, the just, the staff's gonna come back to the board with an operational plan to operation, operationalize the strategic plan with stric- with specific targets for that specific fiscal responsibility. I like maintaining the, the budget award, maintaining, uh, the audits, and, uh, everything else Julie's gonna tell me that we need to do, um, but I, I go back to, it's inherent in the mission statement, we could not maintain our harbor facilities unless we do it fiscally responsible.
Well.
We're gonna do it if we were not ethical. Well, there's all those different attributes of management that you have to have to be able to do it correctly, and those are g- goals for the management team, which is the board giving the direction, and staff, uh, executing that direction, so. I think it should be going in the goal, and ke- and keeping the mission statements shorter than longer, I think it's better as an inspirational, uh, census, but that's, but I'm, you want to put it in, we can put it in.
Doesn't even, you don't have to use the words fiscally responsible, you can use the words, something like acting as a fiduciary for pub- for public funds or something, some, I mean, I, I just, and we've, maybe it's just because I've been around for so long and looking at the harbor. Actually, even longer when I was on the grand jury, and the money part always comes up, because it's been so fiscally mismanaged in the past, and I'm talking about going back to two thousand eight, this is, has nothing to do with the current situation, right? But I know it's been an issue, every single time it gets brought up, you know, like, oh, why, why was our tax, what it, what are our tax dollars going to, and, I mean, you hear it even in the public, um, comments here sometimes, even today, right? With our parking lots, and even using public money to buy land to be made into a parking, why didn't you heard that?
Oh, oh, for, for Sam, which I'm assuming that he's totally aside, but the change is gonna pay us, either customers.
But my point is, it does, you don't have to use the words fiscally responsible, but I do think maybe, um, financial stewardship of public funds, or, I don't know. I, I'm just throwing this out there, because it's not, I get what you're saying, Jim, but it's so easy for, and I've seen it over and over and over with cities today, thank God, like, for these special districts that focus on. But it's so easy for, and I've seen it over and over and over with cities today, thank God, like, for these special districts that focus on essential services. Um, like fire flooding or water, right, where the money is just so, they don't have the great staff that we have too and the great team. But it's just not managed well. And so you're getting.
Don't pause here and disturb the rest of the board.
Sorry, I, I didn't mean to. I don't mean to interrupt, sorry.
Having this thing of fiscal.
I was just wondering, does the word mandate enter into any of this? So, running this and being fiscally responsible is ki- is kind of a mandate, because if you can't run it fiscally and not be fiscally responsible, you're not gonna run it. Right. So, so is mandate a goal, or should mandate be like, it shouldn't be part of a vision, I mean, you gotta be doing, like Jim was saying.
Put it there for the reasons Virginia's saying, if you think it.
I don't think that ma- being fiduciaries and managing public funds is a mission of a public agency, because I do think it's the number one through ten top priorities.
I, I would say that in our enabling legislation, which is what you were coming to, it also incorporates the state. Even though we are not in, in county, uh, but it does incorporate the state fiscally responsible.
So does I agree with you, so.
Yeah, but the, but my point is, they are not.
They're, they're not all that.
And it, and it's top of mind, at least for me, all the time.
Yeah, so if for some specific reason you want to include it, you can always include it. I, I don't think personally that it's normally part of a mission statement, because it goes without saying. But it's, if it's a problem here and you need to say it, then you can do whatever you want to do.
I don't think it's, it goes without saying. I think it should be emphasized and spelled out as, uh, the, one of the top goals of the district.
And it can be there.
Well, not in the mission, but Jim's saying, is in the vision, goals and.
Mandate, we're gonna, we have to do it.
And you have to do.
But to what level do we have to do it?
So.
We don't have to go get the budget award. We don't have to have clean audits. We can have dirty audits.
No, but we do, we always do the extra mile.
We do. Our goal is to maintain clean audits and, uh, accounting procedures. Our goal is to maintain the annual budget award.
Then why not put being, act, you know, being, um, excellent steward of public funds in the part of the mission?
And, and so what, the way my mind works, which, I'm sorry, is that I look at the budget document.
A beautiful thing.
I, I would. I look at the budget document, and in the budget document, we have created certain visions, and we've spelled those out. And we have a little emblem saying, okay, these are the goals that are supporting those visions, and this is how good we're doing. But if I look at the purvo- the proposed vision here, how am I going to report how good I'm doing on the Ocean Science Center being popular and engaging? Well, we don't even have one. Wouldn't the vision be, we need to um, come up with a plan to support.
That's a goal. So the vision is to do it, and then the goal would be to do the plan, and then get funding, and blah, 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 all those other things to, to implement. An ocean science center, the goals would be to get all those other things. But the vision is just kind of the broad thing that we want to bring this education to the people and. You know, so we're not even calling it the Ocean Science Center anymore, I think, or, or are we? Ocean Science Education, Public Understanding of Regional Environmental Issues, that kind of thing.
I don't know. I don't know. I'm not being clear on, on the way that this brain of mine works. But does, does everyone understand what I'm kind of trying to get at? It's like, how do we build the goals to support our visions when we haven't determined that the Ocean Science Center is a reality? We say it's gonna be popular and engaging. Does that make sense?
Well, if you take, if you take rid of the Ocean Science Center and we just put in public education.
Okay.
Yeah, okay.
Which could include the ocean.
Ocean Science Center, you're right.
That's a goal would be.
The goal is the Ocean Science Center that then meets that vision of bringing education to the people. Yeah, well, we're just talking this one specifically, but yeah, it's one of them.
I guess the vision would to body programs that will help support that or something, right?
Well, if you're starting to get to work.
Right.
So here's how it's written, "Districts, effort of ocean and bay education programs help the public understand ocean and sea migrations that affect their lives and choices." That's an aspirational picture of the future. You don't have any programs today to do that. But somewhere in the goals, objectives, or work plan, you will have items, like I know you have a committee already. The committee is gonna do X, Y, and Z. Three years from now, you may say, we'll never be able to make this, so we're gonna do something else. We're gonna make a bunch of signs and displays, or we're gonna do something else. This is purely operational, and don't think it's a mistake. Because there will be in the plan, something to work towards that, even though it's not real yet. Goals, objectives, or work plan, or all of it.
I'd like to just maybe make a slight change to that. It says, "Ocean and bay education programs help the public understand regional environmental issues that affect their lives and choices." Because we already say bay and ocean up, up further and then, environment means everything. It's the fisheries, it's everything that, that, you know, is embedded in this whole area and the.
And I think you're absolutely right. If we're, if we're going to have a larger vision, it includes Coyote Point. So we need to, including bay.
Well, that's why we have both of them. It's right, it's up there.
And I'm supporting what you're saying, that we need to expand it to the bay, so when we finally take over Coyote Point. We've already made room for it.
Very little specific progress on this anytime soon. But what you say throughout the plan is, as we gain expertise, management, and governance, someday they'll be under your control. You don't have a specific plan here. So this is a very general aspirational idea with, you know.
We're coming up with our goals and our work plan to support that. What does that look like? And that's what I'm having trouble visualizing.
Right now, I think you only work. An item would be to operate effectively and efficiently and to prove, to gain respect. It's very little in the near term that you're gonna actually do to do any of it. But maybe X years from now, you'll be able to make a specific move to do it.
So you would. Have the more concrete visions at this point?
You could, you could. Is this too much? Is it helpful to say you want to do this, or is it not helpful?
Yeah.
I don't know. I think you leave it that way, and the goals we made, one goal may be to continue pursuing with LAFCO are taking over the airports. They've already said no once, but they left the door open. So that would be a goal, that one of those will implement that vision by having, doing this. So the, the where you do stuff comes out of the goals.
We operationalize the vision through the goals.
Yeah.
And the objectives and the work plan.
Wow.
Yeah, so Julie, I think an excellent thing to do before, before all this is done, there's a step that I just called reality checking, which is, I think, what you're doing, where we'll look across the whole thing and say, here's the work we're doing to meet the goals and objectives, to meet the mission and vision. And do we really have work to support that? If not, are we gonna change the plan so we're not just saying nice things? And, and, and do we either change the plan or do we add work? And I think it's just a little too early for that, but it's an excellent question, and, and that is the last step. I mean, it's perfectly good to bring up now, but I think these are realistic visionary ideas that the district has. They're very aspirational and they're big, some of them. But that's okay, because three or five years ago, you couldn't even realistically have any of these aspirations. Like, you were trying to function. You were barely functioning. So, now you're at a point where you're saying, we're functioning well, we want to dream big. That's what I'm hearing from this board. Although, to your point, we don't totally know how we're gonna get to all these places. But it doesn't mean we're not gonna dream big and work on it step by step.
And this is our guidelines, not necessarily our, um, the, the way I look at it, and that's why I support having fiscal in, in many places. These are our guidelines, and, and as I've said before, this is our sales document for the public. This is what we're saying, hey, this is where we want to go. Join us. And, uh, let's, let's keep moving this district forward with our superior staff and our, our fabulous board, and let's just keep moving.
I mean, uh, uh, an analogy that, and one of my kids was planning to get married, he's talking about.
Still up there.
Trade having kids, buying a house one day, all of that seems impossible. He doesn't really exactly know what job they'll have, how they'll do it, where they'll live. But they, they're painting a picture for themselves of the life they want to have. This is really the same thing. It just happens that it's pretty aspirational, and I, I mean, kudos to all of you. You want to do some big thing. You don't want to just sit here and run the status quo. So, it's a little thin on how it's gonna get delivered in people, but you're still naming it. I'd like to move on, um, just so we can make progress. On the, I want to go backwards to the, to the mission statement. Virginia, you brought up wanting to bring in something about fiscal responsibility or something. There was some debate about whether that's necessary or not. Let's settle the mission and come back to the vision so we can finish something and keep moving. What, what specifically do you want to do, or do you change your mind, or what do you want to do with the mission statement?
I'm looking at the first one.
Go ahead.
Look, yeah, the. Yeah, and, um, maritime search and rescue capability. Uh, yeah, so. It's not, it's not, yeah, okay, so, commercial work and healthy outdoor to public education, environmental stewardship. And a maritime search and, and, um, do we want to put N A maritime? Or and maritime search and rescue capabilities?
If we have capability, I think we need A maritime.
Yeah, but I'm saying take out the A and put capabilities plural. Jim, are you okay with that?
Or whatever you thought.
Okay, and maritime search and rescue capabilities. And I would say, um, something like, while being fiduciaries of public tax dollars or something.
We can just copy from the original.
But you have your original.
I was gonna say, fiscally and environmental stewardship.
Want to put it in there, just the original language we did five years ago is.
It's good.
It was good.
It's, yeah, the current, he erased the current, but it's on this other one.
But if we go, it goes back to what Catherine was saying that, uh, or somebody was saying about, I think it was Bill, services versus facilities.
Yeah.
Yeah, right.
Our main job is to provide for the statute, a maritime facility. That encourages blah, 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 blah. Our legal responsibility is fiscal responsibility. Fiscal responsible stewardship. Not necessarily, but, but if we're gonna put it in there, I think that's the word to use, fiscal, fiscally responsible stewardship.
Okay.
The goals, I, I still think it's a goal, but I'll leave it at that.
How about the rest of the board, let's just go along.
I might be in the minority here, but.
I was just looking, I had to take the first sentence or parts of that, the fiscally and environmentally responsible stewardship, we could say. Uh, make, uh, and well-maintained public, comma, fiscally responsible marine facilities.
Against, that's not our primary goal, is to provide fiscally responsible.
No, I just.
I think that one of our primary goals is to be the good fiduciaries of tax dollars. I, I do think that is a goal, or a, one of our main responsibilities.
I agree.
Let, let's change the debate a little bit here. I- if you decide to do it, I'll figure out how to get it in there. I've heard the debate. Let's just determine whether we're gonna add it in.
Yeah, I would say we have to add something like that.
Do you want to add something like that? How about you, Bill?
I don't think it really needs to be in our mission statement.
Okay. Catherine, what do you think?
I, I could go yes or no. I mean, it's an underlying state and federal mandate to be fiscally responsible, and there are punishments for not being. But acknowledging that might be an important part of our telling the public that, no, our mission is to provide these facilities or these services supported by these facilities that we have, that we have to be able to have money to accomplish. And that's the fiscal one. So I'm, I'm, my, uh, Mark's next.
Uh, I'm tired of beating the word fiscally. Everybody's fiscally this, fiscally something else. So, uh, I would just take it as an assumed, and, uh, we've been beat up too much in the past, and I think people are dwelling too much on things in the past. We gotta dwell on the future.
Hey, I hear two no's, two yeses, and one in the middle, which is. Um, Catherine, come down one way or the other.
Keep that, come up in the goal.
Let's think about, let's, let's let us process it, because I don't know about other people, but my back brain often works.
Right, let's, let's move on. Another thing is, there's an argument out there, we shouldn't be using public dollars at all.
Which is the reason that managing public dollars is even more important.
For those who want to steal our public.
Hey, here, let's move on. We're back to the vision. I think everyone agreed to this one. I think we're good with this. Quality accessible is what that's. It added an economic development that I think everyone generally agreed with. We maybe can wordsmith, but do you generally agree with that? Let's, let's get off of wordsmithing at this point.
And if we stick, if we combine it to be local, then maybe agencies that we're working with to get an education, maybe going to the resource center or whatever. We're getting money. I mean, it just, it, it, it gets, it's too.
On both sides of the count.
That's fine.
Okay, responsible, resilient management. This kind of deals with the economic development kind of a, a little, not quite so straightforwardly, but makes the district financially sustainable, fully funding all its identified need while maintaining a healthy reserve and balanced budget. District operations are environmentally sustainable, and the facilities are adapted to the foreseeable impacts of climate change. So we were combining all sorts of management responsibility under this idea of responsible management management. Financially sustainable, um, operationally sustainable, environmentally sustainable, and the facilities are gapped in. So, that was, you, you guys had a long conversation about that. No one's brought that up yet, but I just wanted to point that out. Are we good with that?
I mean, yeah, but, okay, so I guess, are we using the highlighted words as headings or as part of the first part of the whole sentence?
Both, um, but you could take them separately, the way that's written. Like, if you wanted a super short version of this, you get rid of all the non-bold stuff and just kind of remind yourself of the categories of what it's about.
Change the word foreseeable to forecasted.
Are you looking at that?
That's the impact. Unresponsible, resilient management, last sentence.
But foreseeable impacts. Forecasting is very much a financial term. I, I, I don't know.
Other term.
It is, oh, that, okay, but I mean, I view it as a forecast financial.
When you use it as a other term, you know, it's just a gamble.
Yes.
I like foreseeable.
But we don't know if it's gonna be three feet or twenty feet.
Well, I'm forever forecasting things, but because I use foreseeable. And I think foreseeable is, makes you sort of be the what ifs, forecasting comes from someone else. I like foreseeable.
I'll, I'll work, I like word forecasted, but I, foreseeable is also.
What about potential impacts of climate change?
That's even better.
Yeah, I like that.
I like potential, thank you.
Okay, let's keep moving down. Fun, uh, makes the district the manager of choice, due to the district's expertise, superior management, good governance, and economies of scale, all public harbor, marinas, and airports in the county are now under district management.
So what is this make, what is makes the district the manager of choi, what for manager of choice for the harbor district or as a public agency in the county versus anyone else to run the harbor district, I mean, what does that mean?
Now, what we could do, we could do this, just say reputation for.
I would say not due to, because of. I, I don't, I, I would keep it like this.
I like making it.
Yeah. Yeah.
Then we, we have a couple of fragments, search and rescue, and instead of wordsmithing it, I could work with staff. Quality infrastructure, I kind of thought that was taken care of above.
It's clear enough above because we really need to speak to.
I agree.
And the new docks, the fueling, the ice machine, small arms supply. Places for the crew to short-term live, like campers.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm going to walk with you on that.
So.
May I suggest for superior search and rescue that somewhere in there, the word safety.
Yeah.
It's superior search and rescue and maritime assist, which is safety.
But I like the word.
Maritime safety is assist.
Yeah, otherwise.
And maritime safety.
Safety and assist.
The safety and assist.
And to avoid wordsmithing, I'll come back, you know all about this, Jim, we'll, we'll work on this.
So let me ask.
Economic development.
It's all with Rachel, hang on.
Even if it's not perfect, is that something like what we want?
We had it up in the top part, right?
We removed it, um, I think someone suggested.
I thought it was, yeah, it's right there.
Yeah, we did, I, you're right, we moved it.
Yeah, we moved it from the bottom.
I'm going to get rid of this one, we already looked at it, uh, and then education.
But if I were reading it, I'd be going, what the hell? Turning a whole new subcategory and, and hiring more, so I just like, uh.
I said.
Or opportunities.
I did advance public education in coastal and ocean sciences as well as coastal and ocean safety to include, but not limited to boat and safety, water safety, and environmental safety. Ocean coastal and ocean sciences.
Yeah, I, I just don't like a program. That means you've got staff and people.
Coastal and ocean sciences.
Which includes environmental science, safety, but that's kind of what. I was trying to come up with a specific purpose for the non-perp, the nonprofit.
About educational opportunities, public understand.
Think the nonprofit is its only thing and it should be, I think the district should have a collaborative ocean and the recognition. Or, um, that's not the right word.
Yeah, the nonprofit is specifically to support this issue.
Opportunities.
I like opportunities, that's what I said too.
Okay. Good enough. Can, can we move on now?
I ask one last question, Martin, so, I mean, obviously, this is, involves the harbor district specifically in the, the main party here. But I do think that, um, our collaborative partnerships should be stated in there somewhere because we have to work with other agencies.
It's collaborative.
Well, that's for specific things, I'm talking about just partnerships in general, like we have to work with WADA, we have to work with, you know, the county or the, you know, I don't know, maybe it's all of that, maybe actually more implicit.
I mean, as a part of your vision, yes, you do, and yes, you will.
Okay. Do we have to, I mean, we may not, I don't, I don't think we do.
It's what we're all, what. I don't like collaborating, if you're what we want. Collaborate with some others who wants us to give us their money or our money.
Okay, to move on, if we covered it, let's move to values. Um, there's current values, which you had before. The same I want to say about values, I think even more than everywhere else, we talked about this when we, you know, during the workshop, is pretty much any sane person is going to believe in almost any typical value, like all of these, you know, responsibility, um, creativity, kindness, whatever, you could list 200 values and they'd all go, yeah, we agree with that. The question of values is, which one do you want to specifically emphasize and which ones move you to be able to make decisions and, and, and really believe in deeply and, and, and work to follow and, and forth? And so, we could list 100 values here, but the question is which ones really matter to this difficult.
Yeah, I do too.
Like the first one from the front one?
I like, no, I like the whole thing.
Whole thing, I can't see editing it.
Okay.
Give us an hour.
Well, look at the proposed one. I, I did, I, I, I think.
Like values shouldn't flip flop around.
Well, not only that, but the proposed ones are more limiting, I like the, the current ones because they're more open and fluid.
Catherine suggesting, starting with the first set. Uh, any other board member, let's just hear from you two before we get into detail on that.
I like the, the current ones too.
Okay, there's, uh, Virginia's liking the first set. And that doesn't mean they can't be edited somewhat, but we're talking about, let's focus on the first set instead of the second. Tom, Bill, George.
I think they're fine.
The first set.
Yeah.
Okay.
Like the first set with maybe adding one of the other ones from the proposed. Resilience, resilience is, resilience is the big buzzword and risk conversion and all that, so we're going to have to look at, you know, our proposed value is to also look at the resiliency of the harbor and how it will function in the future under proposed weather kinds of and other kinds of changes, but the resiliency, I think, is, is kind of a new value that we should, you know.
Okay, that's proposed, and before we go any further, Tom, are you okay to start?
Equality, Rob is being wrong there for some reason, but equality, we accept nothing less than equal access.
Okay.
Just that whole thing, um, somewhat offensive, you might get, it doesn't feel right.
Well, because it's a woke, date six, seven years ago.
Want to get rid of it, I mean, the one. Just need to get rid of that.
Yeah, I would replace equality with resilience.
I'm just getting rid of it.
Yeah, but we're going to move resilience up to the top, with George, I agree with that.
Okay, if you look up, you can see where we're at.
Yeah.
Bill, I don't think we heard from him.
Oh, no, I, uh.
Oh, yeah, you did, you said you were close. Okay.
And I agree entirely.
So maybe it's fairly straightforward, we got rid of the equality one, added resilience.
They're not moving respect up there.
No, that's the same thing as equality, it's, it's, of course, that's like fiscal responsibility, of course, we're going to keep people looking respectful.
Okay, that's fine, so then we'll move equality down in resilience, replace equality with resilience.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's fine with me, I agree.
Did we hear from George, he just stepped that out and remember.
I think he.
He said it was good with resilience.
Yeah.
Yeah, he's, yeah.
The one who suggested resilient.
You're good. We're going to skip big picture view, that's last. This priorities and areas of excellence is just here for reference, it doesn't matter anymore. It was from the workshop and it was just so you could see what you said at the workshop you thought was most important, which is revenue enhancement, first, you can see the difference between the board, board vote and the staff vote. Uh, facility upgrade and maintenance was, was, I think, the clear second, and then you kind of have um, maybe a third and then everything else is less, good governance, and then emergency response, education and collaboration for the next tier, and then operate other facilities, that would be a last one. And that makes sense, the last one, because it's aspirational at this point, it's not an active priority.
So when you're talking about the votes on these, it, it was.
It was from the workshop.
In terms of priority, because there aren't seven members on the board. So we voted it as number seven.
Yes.
That, okay, okay.
Like I probably put two there, right?
Uh, this goes away, I'm going to delete this, we're going to look at priorities separately later, this is just as a reminder of where you were at the workshop. Um, moving on, the next page is just explaining a little bit. That one, this plan only focuses on key areas of change, it's not meant to cover everything you do. There's a million things you do that aren't mentioned in the plan, you know, perhaps. Timing, that will be specifically dealt with by staff in the operational plan, it's been called it, or I call it the work plan. Um, same with, there will be an implementation plan and priorities, we'll look at in a minute, um, in a little bit. This is where we get into the final sort of run at the big things, we have the goals, there's a handful of goals, I forget, there's five, I believe, maybe four. Just to kind of remind you, there's a goal which is a general statement, it's not really actionable in its own right, it's just a general statement about what we're talking about. Then we have this little write-up, strategic background, like, um, a little bit about it, like, what is, what is it about? A strategic challenge and opportunities, what's the problem, why are we talking about this, or what are the opportunities? A strategic response is really just a narrative version of the objective below. And what really matters here more than everything is the objectives, because when staff makes a work plan, it's going to be to the objective. Every objective will have some kind of work for the staff to do to make it real. So the staff, the, the objectives are what really kind of where the rubber hits the road, where you do some activity to achieve them. And so, we can comment on any of it, but just remember, it's the objectives where you're giving direction and the board will, the staff will create work to achieve it. Rest are nice words that I've left, just to help us understand and remember the context for all. Um, any comments on either the goal or all the write-up before we get to objective?
Background, why is it supports or provides, not supports and provides?
That's probably a good comment, yeah. All right, let's move down to the objectives.
I would, I would not only talk about numerous regulatory, economic, and other challenges that have impacted commercial fishing, but it has to do with the oper, the, the entire operation of the harbor district. You know, we, we tried to do a clam chowder cook-off or something and, um, the county's regulations allowed, uh, made it so we couldn't do it, every other county can do it, but this county.
And below, where we talked about regulations, this, this front part was mostly. It could include the district in that sentence, but if you go below, related challenges include complex regulations that slow down projects and increase costs. We can add to that person.
I, I would just like to see, uh, the district, um, faces a wide variety of, of, um, not, challenges and, um, there's another word floating around.
Regulatory.
Regulatory.
Challenges, maybe.
Regulatory and economic challenges, um, that have impacted not only the district, but specifically commercial fishing, I, it, these, these, these regulatory things.
Yeah. Permitting for the restaurants too.
That's right, that's right. Um, and, and we're going to be putting in, um, visitor-serving accommodations, and I can't even begin to tell you what the, the, what the county and the state are going to throw in our face through the regulatory.
So I threw in, and the district more broadly, if you look at that.
Yeah.
Impact on commercial fishing and the district more broadly for many years.
Thank you.
See recreational and commercial because they're different and recreational's been slaughtered just like, uh.
Or commercial.
Yeah, we used, we had how many recreational boats and now we're down to one?
Had 15 big boats, now we've got four big boats and, what, four small ones?
Yeah, just been slaughtered and, and we're facing the same kind of problems at least at the point.
Hey, can we move down to the objectives or is there more?
I think that was a really good addition.
And except for the work plan itself. And they're meant to be general statements and they're written in an odd form, they're written in the form of the result you want. So that it's clear that it's the staff's job to come up with how you're going to do it, so it, what you want to achieve, not how you're going to do it.
Nice save for the staff. To, to get meddling board members out of their hair.
Yeah. Are there any comments to this or are these ones okay? No, um, no.
I don't know, doesn't really matter, I just get so bogged down about the order, just because I was.
Want to suggest an order thing, but perfectly fine.
How about in all particular, in no particular order?
When, when it's combined with the work plan, that that will define, either you'll name a priority for individual things or you'll have an urgency, like something will be first or second.
And, and this is, this, this is just for us, or this is going to be a more public.
This will be public, no, this.
In that case, we need to say the following objectives in no particular order.
Well, I actually have an order.
Oh, you do.
Go ahead.
I would do, for number one, would be 1.2, which. I would do, for number one, would be 1.2, which is about harbor, harbor facility service, blah, blah, blah. Number two would be 1.4.
So the service area will be.
No, 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 no. I'm doing, oh, I'm sorry. Okay, hold on. So 1.2 becomes 1.1. 1.4 becomes 1.2. 1.1 becomes 1.3. 1.5 becomes 1.4. And then 1.3 becomes 1.5. That, that's just me. I mean.
Nervous.
Because it can be just the.
Now you can see her up there, if you had a hard time keeping that there.
Not so much priority. I, I just, these are the things I would view as important to me and to maybe the public. But, you know, others may have a different opinion, but that's just mine.
Say that this will not change the priority of anything.
Right.
The actual plan.
Right. Yes, but I think that perception's so important. I think the perception's important, especially when this is a public document. Is that, that's on the other page.
No, it's on the top one.
Oh, here, sorry.
Meeting services events, meet evolving public needs and provide needed revenue.
Oh, here, sorry. Oh, my God, I told you.
Yeah, so let's, let me pause for one second. No, I'm glad you brought it up. It's important and we can change it, but the actionable part of this plan is right here. This is what it's asking you to do, all these things. This is meant merely to be a word summary of what the overall drift of this is. But you're not gonna make a work plan for this. You're gonna make a work plan to all this, and then ask yourself, does it all add up to this? But it's not a specific actionable operational statement. It's a, it's a category. It doesn't mean we can't rewrite it or change it, but you make a work plan to the objective.
Right, but if you go down to the objective 1.2, it's a repeat of the goal. So why do we have a? If the objective is the repeat of the goal, it's, the goal is the objective.
I'd be happy to do that.
Yeah, that's what I would do. Yeah. Yeah, I, I like that more.
The strategic response paragraph, the second sentence. The goal is to better serve the public more than the government.
Where, where are you looking?
Where are you reading? Strategic response. A sort of narrative summary of what's in the objective, but again, it's not, you're not gonna do, make a work plan to that response. It's a description to help people understand where we're going in general. The actionable part of the plan is right there. This is what.
Is there action items?
No, they're not action items. They're direction from the board telling me what they want. Then the staff will make a work plan for each of these. So like, let's just look at this first one. Let's, this is it. The service area role and limits for the search, search and rescue services are identified, and ongoing funding to meet the defined need and security. Staff may have a lot of work for a number of years to achieve that. That's what you're trying to achieve. There's a lot of work to do to get there, and it will probably evolve over time. It's not a simple thing to do.
So what you're saying is, look at goal one, which we all agree with, then this is the order in which we are asking the staff.
No, the orders are relevant in terms of the.
Right, right.
If it makes you feel better to put one in front of the other for whatever reason, or seem politically better to do. Each of these objectives are, the staff is asking them.
Right.
Is asking staff to achieve.
Right, and I just put it in this order because this is a public document. For me. That's why I said for me.
Oh, okay, then I'm not gonna worry.
But it doesn't have to say.
No, but can I ask about goal number one?
What's the objective?
Goal, goal, where it says services and operations. So I did like this one section. It says meeting, me, evolving public needs.
You mean as a sort of subset to that?
No, no, I mean, can it be like services and operations based on public, evolving public needs? No, services and operations. I like that top part. And then add on, based on evolving public needs, or is that too limiting? I don't know. That may be too limiting.
Oh, it got that in 1.2 though. I don't know what's going on.
That's user needs. I think that's, I don't know, maybe that's a good point, Tom. What is the difference?
It's kind of the same as Jim's point. If, if you really wanted to just be a label, you can just do that. Jim, does that work for you, or do you want that statement?
Me, trying to operationalize this. I think the goal needs to be more specific. But if we just say services and operations, then I use the, the objectives for its service and operations. It's wide open for me.
He wants more specificity.
That's why I go back to what is, what is our, what is our specific goal? Uh, we've, we've gone through the mission statement, our vision, and our, what are the, what are the goals the district's gonna be working on or focusing on the next five years? And beyond.
It, it may be a word problem. If you were to call all these goals. These are the things that, that, that you've been asked to work on, unless we have it done. You're not gonna do any specific operational activity.
Right, that's, and goal one, what's your goal? Services and operations?
That's crazy.
This is a title. So what is our, what is goal one? Are we, are all these objectives underneath supporting improving revenues? Is it improving facilities? Is it improving services? What is my goal? Were all these objectives trying to achieve? And they're so wide and expansive.
To provide superior service and operation.
Then you could, then you turn the page.
You have.
Kind of like the current strategically plan, we have a lot of objectives under goal one, two, and five, just using numbers as examples, are the same. And the same activity supports all three goals. Which doesn't. But that, it was very hard to follow that, where we have, what's our specific goal towards our mission statement? It doesn't have to be tied specifically. Our goal is to maintain fiscally responsible operations, or however you want. Virginia would have a better word for that. But, and then our objectives under maintaining fiscal are pretty easy to fill in, where this goal is so broad, it's, it covers everything.
Make a stab at it. I mean, just, to me, like, the, the goal is a diffuse thing here in the state. But the, the fourth thing I think you're trying to do is to gain much-needed revenue.
Right, that.
So, under finance is a bunch of financial things, but this is operating your facilities in a way that they need to start to.
Right, and that's why I think our goal number one, because we are $80 million in the hole, is how do we increase revenue? Not goal services and operations.
Oh, you mean just in order? Well, we, we can reorder them.
It's just revenue. How to increase, uh, not, not tax dollars, but enterprise revenue. And then have the objective support increasing revenue. And then our next goal could be facilities. Once we get the money, how do we do the facilities? What order? But really, our goal, our main, one of the main goals for me is increasing revenue. Another main goal for me is maintaining a I wanna say superior, superior search and rescue capability. That's a goal for us. Where our goals right now, as we list them, are so broad that it's hard to focus down on specific tasking for those broad tasks. Because I wanna be able to, and you, you agree with this, I believe, is I wanna have a goal that's achievable. And sometimes, an exceptional staff and board people. How do I measure success and how do I achieve that versus more specific goals of increasing revenue, search and rescue, fiscal responsibility, environmental stewardship, education, those are our goals overall, specific goal, which each one had multiple objectives underneath to meet them. As opposed to the, these things that are so broad and huge, we'll never get to them in five years. Or is that too specific?
We can adjust. How we talk about it. Just a couple of random thoughts. In this conception of the way this plan is built, the objectives are the measurable thing. You don't measure the goal. The goal is not operational in its own right. It's a category to gather some other things. If it would be helpful for you and for the district to state the goals in a way that they provided more clarity, we can definitely work on it. But in this conception, the goal is too broad to be simply measurable. It doesn't mean you can't say like, gain revenue, like that was one of the ones you said. I see gaining revenue in two places here. You're gaining revenue under this services and operations by changing the way you manage and operate the marina. So there's gaining revenue things here, and there's gaining revenue things under planning. If you wanna get them all into one place and reorder this, you may have to have a discussion and then come back, like.
Finance to me doesn't, is not increasing revenue. Finance is accountability.
Yeah, yeah, you see, and that's how this is set up.
And that's how I look at the.
That's how it's set up here. So we could change this goal as gaining revenue as a primary goal. Like gaining revenue of how we operate and manage facilities, something like that.
Increase, uh, going, going back to our vision of increasing enterprise revenues in support of operation, uh, support operations.
I mean.
And that would, that would work perfectly with what's already here.
When I think of this stuff, I'm thinking of two buzzwords in my head. One is maintain, which we're doing now, and we need to continue to do that, but the other one is improve. So you're maintaining, we're gonna keep on working maintaining, but part of the important part, and that, the goal is really to improve on that, to make our maintenance better, to make it more resilient, to do a lot of things that we're doing now to make it better. So increase enterprise revenue, that's, you know, also my, that's the improving part. So maintain, continue to get revenue as we're doing, and improve by doing these kinds of goals, by implementing certain things.
In this case, I think if you increase revenue.
Oh, see, I don't agree with that.
Okay.
Because I think you can make, you can try to increase, I'm, I'm just thinking about you know, other agencies or cities that, like, I'm thinking of school districts, for example, what do you parcel tax? Just because they increased, it doesn't mean that they're necessarily maintaining it. I mean, I've seen it in several schools.
Let's, let's not confuse us with it.
No, 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 but I'm just saying, it's, it's about financial management. I don't think they go hand in hand.
Okay, so.
They should.
Language here.
I agree, that's.
Do you have a suggestion? Like, what, what would we do if this, to do that?
Maintain and increase, or, I think we're offered, but it makes sense.
Increase in managed enterprise revenues?
I have a, a question here, too. We know that commercial fishing and recreational fishing have been negatively impacted. And so we're seeing a trend that our enterprise revenues are actually decreasing, and we're becoming more dependent on operating tax revenues. So if we're gonna put a goal in here to increase the enterprise revenues, I, as, I, I'm trying to think of the details, but it might be better to say that we want to, in, we want to increase or we wanna ensure that our, our budget is balanced. Because if we can't increase revenues, then we need to decrease our expenditures, but we need to keep that in balance, or increase our working capital reserves, or something like that. And, and not put ourselves into a position where we can't meet that goal.
This, to me, this goal is something like, change the way you manage and invest in the facilities and services so that they return more money. I mean.
Make new ones.
But, yeah, yeah.
Make new revenue sources, yeah.
Again, the fiscal management, I, I think goes to fiscal management.
Oh, yeah.
But I think, Julie, I, I like where Julie's going with this. Increase enterprise revenues to ensure a balanced budget, which is great. And then, but fiscal goes back to what Julie's saying, and I think what Virginia for sure, is the accountability part. How do we ensure an open and accountable fiscal stewardship? Versus how do we increase our revenues? So fiscal accountability, and this is the revenue portion, of how do you increase the revenues to ensure a balanced budget? What that means, I, I can work with that, with objectives.
But, uh, just to say it the way I think I understand it, and check me if I'm wrong, what you're fundamentally talking about is developing new sources of revenue and changing the way you manage things to derive revenue from the operation, from management.
This, this is, you know, ensuring leases are up to market value, taking the new property we just built and use it, uh, figure out how to maximize the revenue that we can collect with those new pieces of property.
Okay.
Oil storage, stack storage. Should we put a, a new dock in the water for, at a different location to support private recreational versus charter boat recreational? A different launch point, because our launches are going all the way out the ha, the highway on busy days. So that's how I.
Some of those things you're talking about are over here under, so you may need to not here in a room with all those people have some general discussions and come back and recompose this thing, so it makes sense.
And leverage all right, some of the things like properties, for example. How do we leverage our property holdings?
Right.
Right, and I think that's under the first.
Yeah.
That's under the first one.
Revenue.
Yeah, that's what I'm, yes.
Other goal is to, you know, for me is maintain our facilities.
Yeah.
And there's a lot of different priorities on how, which, how we're gonna maintain our facilities. Short term and long term.
Well, let's do this, as a global statement, because we can't wordsmith the whole thing around standing here.
Right.
It sounds like the goal categories need to be reworked with all of it, right? So some things will move into some new goals, and we need to restate the goals in a way that makes sense to you and can guide you. I think that would still allow us to look at the objectives and kind of generally talk about each one, but then not actually make all these changes sitting here today, because it'll just be here all night. So Jim, I'm not gonna capture your specific thought here, because it crosses like three goal areas. We'll come back. And talk through this together, like, we'll logically work our way through it. Let's look at these objectives, and if we can note where they'll go, we'll note. Otherwise, I'll make a stab at reworking the entire plan to make it make sense for all of it. Looking in the order they are, like go from the top. The service area role and limits for the search and rescue services are identified, and ongoing funded to meet the defined need is secured. Is that something the board wants to have done? And is that language that makes sense? Okay. Harbor facilities and services meet evolving user need, and provide the operating revenue needed to maintain and operate district services.
Could that be the goal? We take it out of this and put it at the top?
I would suggest you not worry about it yet, like, let's just say that, that I'll rework the goal.
Okay, okay. I mean, I, because I actually like that statement, which is the reason I moved it to number one. In my reorder, I mean, but if, I mean, that's pretty, that that's general, but specific enough to actually be the goal, so that instead of having five of these, we have four and make that one the top and. I know y'all are gonna work it out.
We'll consider that, but I don't have a full understanding of what Jim's talking about.
Yeah.
I put a note, consider this for goal.
Yeah, okay, perfect.
Are you saying when, the way I can read this is harbor facilities and services provide the operating revenue?
Like, so I was thinking making that go up to the very top.
Well, I I I see that, but what I'm trying to figure out is. Operating revenue. Is that a broader statement that involves property taxes and grants and other and other things? Or is it limited to a narrow definition of revenue from operations of harbor facilities?
Think in other places we're gonna see, we're looking for taxes and other things, so. Let me suggest that. Brought up a good question, but we can't solve it sitting here. I'll work with Jim to reconfigure all these. Let's just ask if each one makes sense in its own right. You can raise a question about it, like, what about taxes? I can tell you, we're gonna hit taxes in a little bit somewhere else. And later, they'll all be moved around probably to be in categories that make sense for all of you. Um but I'll do that with Jim sort of offline or Jim and staff.
I would rephrase this to say harbor facilities and services meet evolving user needs. With. With the operating revenue needed.
Because I don't want to limit it just to money from operations.
Okay. Just one caveat, I I'm noting what you've said, we're hearing it, we may make more changes than.
I I understand. I think, like Julie, what I'm looking for is an internal consistency where you don't have. She's seen it with our public, I've seen it with the public everywhere, is, and so has everybody else, is people hang on a specific small section of some document.
Yeah.
And entire court cases are decided on this instead of looking at, and so we have to be careful to make sure that our. Uh language is is clear enough about our intent. Uh and that's why I bring up, I don't want to limit this to operating revenue for future boards to understand. Because I don't want a future board to say, oh, no, we can only, if that doesn't pay for itself, we're getting rid of them.
So I've understood two things going on. One, you want to have. When you want to have harbor facilities and services that meet evolving user needs. And another thing that this is asking for is that they provide some operating revenue. In addition, some of them provide some operating.
Exactly.
And, you know, so these are gonna have to get heavily rewritten.
Yeah, I agree.
Let's go to the next one. New improved and expanded events and services meet the needs of the public, are sustainable over time, and provide diverse and stable revenue. And I think what we'd say is, put it kind of not very elegantly, but, and some of them provide diverse and stable revenue streams, they all won't. Then it's badly written right now, but. The district is acting creatively and productively to communicate with, promote and support the evolving mix of businesses and services and marketing. In other words, you're not just giving them a lease, you're trying to promote the harbor and all the businesses that are coming up to help them be successful. Is that something you want to do?
I think that's important. I was just thinking that in uh earlier discussing about um. Educating the public about the ocean and the bay, we could actually put in our lease that one of the. Well, we could either, we could do it in several different ways, but to make it that when we write a lease, there are requirements that the business is supporting. The education and recreational opportunities, not just through its its um. Lease and and uh rents, but through its its business, so they might have to have a um section in their decor that talks about. Education or or harbor safety. Um it may not fit their decor package that they've so carefully chosen, but we can certainly ask. To have that kind of of opportunity and and so I like uh the existing number one point four. Because that's general enough that you can write it into our leases on with specifics.
If it gets.
That's another discussion. Exactly. Absolutely.
So let's move on to goal two, recognizing that we're gonna rewrite these goals and maybe reorganize where everything's put. Is there anything that you would call out in the district text part of this screen?
I asked, it looks like people need to.
Yeah. I'm good with that. How long do you want to take?
I I don't know, few minutes.
Minutes.
I I think we all need to just stretch and get some air and let our minds.
It's twelve nineteen, how about twelve thirty?
Ten minutes.
Need to, this is a public meeting, do we need to shut it down and open it up again?
No, we're just on three.
What page are you on? What page are you on? Oh, okay. Okay, we're live too, by the way. Everybody can hear everybody.
Right there. Get down to one point six. There you go, perfect. That's what we're reviewing, aren't we? That's goal two. Should be two point one, two point two.
Um so it actually says one point. Yeah, it should be two, but it's in one.
That's goal two. Those should be twos, not ones.
Yeah.
First one, every property.
Okay. Sorry.
First one, as it's written, every property.
Are you, are we basically saying we need to do an audit of everything that we. We thought we would use something for, but maybe it's changed. Well, I guess it's always good to have an idea of what you're gonna do with the property. I guess I'm concerned about grinding up a lot of staff time just saying, well. What are we doing with this property or the the assumption is that what we're doing with it is what we should do with it, you know, for properties that we already own and maintain. And I would be spending a lot of time.
And you would just assume you established the building that we bring that's hard and some of their. I don't think it's asking for. In in respect to having to talk about the properties and other facilities, you have all the properties.
Yeah.
How soon we need to get out, but we need to be out.
Some of those uses may be fairly vague, because we bought the property with the expectation it's gonna have a future opportunity. But that may not really be something in front of our mind right now.
I think something, I mean, something. Object is under that goal, that what are we gonna do with the new property? We know we took advantage of the opportunity to acquire these properties, but now how are they gonna benefit the public and benefit the district? And some of those ideas that would be developed with the board, and then the board will make the final decision on the direction we go, and then we exit. So I think we do need some kind of objective to to uh. Ensure that the new property is used to the best possible use. Either be public or hopefully both beneficial to the public and gains revenue or just benefits the public.
And actually, I think it should be for both, sorry.
Well, I think.
I agree, I agree.
I think that all of it. Sometimes something that doesn't look better, that that doesn't look like it will produce income in the short run turns out to be very useful. That's why I like um item one point two, under this, which is, we're gonna use it for something and we'll get to the highest investors. With the process.
Right.
Actually.
And it may change over time.
I have that as number two.
Okay.
I have two point five as number, well, one point five as number one.
Okay, yeah, and we'll move those around. Okay, so is number two okay? Two point two. Uh it's the one Catherine just brought up. Every property that.
Really important.
Effectively supporting the mission and priorities. Okay, number three, long-term climate impacts are factored into all major property and facility maintenance upgrades, replacements and new development. The district is prepared to mitigate and recover from unplanned events and maintain cybersecurity. That basically says you're you're gonna have some kind of emergency planning and preparedness.
That seems awkward to me.
Yeah.
Security piece, like, I can see that being as part of the work plan or actions that support the.
You would just stop at events?
Yes.
Okay, that's fine with me.
Say two include cyber.
And I think we're fitting, we'd have to say to include tsunamis and earthquakes and.
Yeah, so.
Address all those little.
I agree with you, if if that's fine. A lot of lately, everyone wants to mention cybersecurity, but if you don't have to, I don't need to. Yeah.
I think cybersecurity, physical safety. Cybersecurity is critical, being on a waterboard.
Good. Uh two point five, or, yeah, a comprehensive plan is in place to guide the long-term prioritization and cost-effective renewal replacement use. And development of district facilities and properties. In other words, you have a plan.
Well, it's my number one.
And two point six, the comprehensive long-term facility plan is updated annually to align with funding projections. The idea behind that is. If if you can't fund it, then you change the plan.
You already do that.
Yeah, so you can get rid of it if you're gonna do it automatically, or is it's good thing?
It's part of our budget, we do it automatically.
Should we get rid of this?
No, because.
Okay, good.
Exactly, this is not, this is not so much for us here and now.
But a future board.
The future boards, we want to have them understand how they got, how we got where they are.
Good, so um moving on to three, recognizing again, oh, go ahead.
So we're gonna get this and we can like, if there's typos and stuff.
Absolutely.
Okay, I do see something in the strategic challenge and opportunities.
If it's just something that does need to discuss, just give it to me and we'll fix it. It may get rewritten some anyway, when we move around the goals, the way Jim's talking about, we may have to rewrite some degree. But please give it to me anyway, gi- give it to me regardless. Uh moving on to people. Any commentary on the, all the parts down to the objectives? Moving on to three people.
Staff turnover.
Hey, if that's not.
Is it a challenge? Right now, we we have a staff that's been stable for at least a year. And like the average number of years that people stay with the district is between five and eight years. So right now it's not, but I'm sure that it could be down the line.
And we might, if we only looked back, we'd say, oh, my God, there's gonna, you know, they'll still be working for us in the West Home, but. Things happen, and if you don't plan for these, then you're challenged.
Catherine, let's look at the objectives and then see if we need to come back and add something. I think it may be covered in the objectives. Looking at the objectives, the district attracts, onboards and retains high-performance staff members and effectively manages succession. I guess when you try to do that already, but there it is as a directive. Someone stop me, I'm gonna keep reading. Staff members use technology to improve cost-effectiveness and accountability throughout the district. Um the district periodically evaluates its staffing, legal and consulting teams to ensure they are the right ones to meet the district needs as challenges and opportunities evolve. And then here's two board ones, or the board one, the board self-evaluates and implements identified improvements, enabling it to work together effectively, represent the public well, provide clear direction. And effective monitoring and oversight and ensure overall good performance. and effective monitoring and oversight and ensure overall good performance. Basically says the board will self-evaluate and there will be a work item for this. The board and staff act effectively to represent and serve the entire district. Meaning, the, the meaning behind that was, uh, oh, I, I read the word district, but I meant the entire county. Not only in terms of governance now because you represent entire county, but eventually if you, if your plan pans out to manage other harbors and airports and stuff, you will physically represent more people, uh, literally in terms of services. Any of these, do any of these need changes, adjustment? Catherine, again to your comment, do you want something back up top now that you've seen this?
Something, well, either that or in the objective, you know, we have a long range.
And so you're asking that.
They have a long, long-range succession plan within our existing staff. And we also keep the connections necessary to replace staff if unnecessary, if major changes come up.
Challenges and opportunities. Founded by one area of improvement is the man supports ability to gather and hear public input. We've got some, uh, people that might feel like they don't have the opportunity to present. However, if they've never been blocked, then there's plenty of opportunities, uh, as with many other governmental operations in the town. Yes, I don't particularly exceed it. There's a problem gathering and hearing public input.
Okay. That was somewhere in the workshop and in the interviews does, what is the rest of the board thing?
I agree with Tom.
We, I agree with Tom. We made so many opportunities to the public.
Okay. Good. Deleted. Does this allow us to move on to the next goal area?
I worked it to add.
Yep.
An objective, you know, I think about just kind of my role as I've, I've joined this team is the morale between, you know, our operations staff and, and admin team. And I would love to kind of make some more concrete, um, actions towards improving, you know, the, the morale that we talk about under staff challenges and opportunities.
Talking about morality, you also touch on the action and. You know.
I would think so because I, I'm not sure, you know, I want those doors to be open between all of our departments and divisions and to continue to work on reducing those barriers. And I think it, we are on this uphill trend, but it's not in this document and I, I know it's a little touchy feely, but I, I think that that, you know, having a positive work environment and a work culture, all, you know, for all of our employees.
That is interacting or. I, I like my personal bias as a business owner is I like to see my store manager know how to clean a toilet and know what my lobby crew had to deal with. Instead of being locked away in their office and not realizing there were some crazy lunatics out there in our lobby that our crew had to deal with.
But I wrote for now and we can work on it. Staff actively promotes the positive work culture and environment and, and we'll work on it if we need. Okay. I'm moving on to three. Any comments to the top part of the page down to objectives?
Did I re? I'll sit, I'll give you.
And, and the objectives are numbered wrong again. I think they might have auto renumbered. Any comments to the top? I'm sorry. Did I hear someone say something?
I don't know. I know that Martin's adding.
It's, it's.
A sixth bowl at the bottom of.
Wait, we're moving on to, I'm sorry, we're moving on to finance, aren't we, for?
Yeah. But did you add it 3.6?
I did add 3.6. So we're moving on to four. I'm sorry. I was numbering wrong.
I had a question when it says no debt.
Again?
I, I see that this says we have no debt, but we have, uh, retirement debt.
So I don't know. That was given to me by, I, I don't know the facts. It's on me.
I think I put an adjective in front of no debt.
What, where is that in the document?
First paragraph, uh, clean audits, maintain a budget surplus that's aligned with.
Maintain and, and has no debt. Is that not untrue?
We have long-term liabilities. We don't have debt like we have our bonds. Yeah.
You don't have any debt service.
Yeah. So we don't have any bonds that we use or a loan. We don't have any, but we do have per liabilities. However, we have long-term liabilities associated with pensions.
Is there a word we could use to clarify? Like we, you have no, what most people think of as debt in the normal sense, like you took out.
A bond. We don't have bond.
Well, or, or various kinds. Yeah.
We don't have loans or anything that have no debt, however.
Do I delete that or should we come up with wording?
I think I'd put a period after solid operating revenue. And continue on with the, with, in other words.
Well, I can, or just can you, what about and has no debt, comma, except for long-term pension liability? I mean.
You may have debt if it makes sense to us. We may have debt in the future if it makes sense to us.
Right. I, that's why.
Oh, I see. You want.
Now, but let's, let's leave it on.
That's fine.
Get rid of it then.
Yeah.
Okay. It's.
We had a statement that we're effectively managing that first liability.
Well, we, we haven't paid this down since 2017.
Oh, the stock market.
Maybe not next week.
It might be wiped out.
That'll affect us a two years' time.
I'm joking. Um, okay. Anything else or can we go down to the objectives? Okay. Um, so the district's financial decision-making and actions are guided by a long-term financial plan and a complete set of financial policies. Is that something you want? See, not. Say it again.
Just put J B H on that.
Okay. Um, the district has identified which costs should be paid with enterprise revenue and which ones through taxes. And the identified funding is achieved. That's a tough one. That's a big project right there. Uh, is that a sensible objective for you guys?
Yes.
I think I would say the district has mechanisms for identifying, which makes it go into the future because this is 1.2 is just a point in time.
Well, they're all.
Has identified.
They're all written as results as if they're done. Even though you know some of them may not be done for many years. They're all written in the same, they're all written in that form as a result. Um, the district systematically grows enterprise revenue to meet needs by leveraging its facilities, properties, services, marketing, and other resources. All new and updated leases and contracts are fully reviewed and updated, so they are fair, complete, and up to date with current market rates and terms.
Yay. I am so glad to see that.
Uh, the district's collections are up to date and lease and contract terms are enforced.
It's gold, right?
Objective.
No, they can well better be.
Yeah. So.
1.2, uh, our enterprise, uh, you can't pay out of just one fund for that. I mean, it's like, uh, some state funds prohibit, uh, funds crossing into different areas. But, uh, we don't know what's, is it true that we're, we delegate our taxes to pay certain bills and our enterprise to pay certain bills? And that's a hundred percent of our budget. Or is there some other overlap or underlap when, uh, your enterprise revenue isn't sufficient to pay certain other bills, so we have to dip into the other revenue?
I think I understand your question. I think this is maybe poorly written. I think the purpose of this one is not what you're saying, which is a financial management thing. This is over the long term, as you make a plan for the new programs and facilities you want, you identify what source of revenue you want and you achieve that source of revenue.
How about saying the district continually, um, continually identifies which costs should be paid. So it, it talks about it as an ongoing process.
Do we even need to do like, I, I assume financially you already do it, which is what Tom's saying, right? Like that, that's just financial management. This is, I, again, I think it's poorly written and maybe needs to be deleted or changed. I think the idea was, again, from your workshop, you have all these new plans to develop new facilities, new services, new programs, whatever they all are. Where's the money going to come from? Like you have a plan for the long-term development process. And like, for instance, you want, if you want some things to be paid for by taxes, you have a plan to work on trying to capture more of those taxes, which I know you're already talking about doing. So it's a difficult financial planning exercise and reality exercise to find a way to pay for all your big plans. And maybe you don't need to say it. If, if 4.1 may cover it, you have a long-term financial plan, maybe that covers this and we can delete it.
And grants and obviously we've got.
Yep. We have one fund. We don't have two separate funds that we track.
Should I delete this?
Right.
That is correct. Yeah. But.
Two's.
Go ahead.
Well, property tax right now, it pays for the public services that we provide at both our harbors and our marinas. It pays for our administrative costs and it pays for our capital projects. And so that's what property tax pays for.
Track it specifically.
Don't say that this one person is cleaning a public restroom and now that same person is, uh, de-watering a boat. So it, because our one person does both public and marina services, that that would not be realistic to make people track to that level.
Right. So there's no benefit of which cost should be paid by enterprise and which should be taxes. Cause it's all one fund. But we do have in a public interest to say that the public tax dollars do support public.
Facilities.
Enterprises and, uh, activities.
Yeah. And we have, we have a responsibility to make sure that our enterprise funds the money that we're collecting for our boating public and stuff is covering the boating services that we provide.
That's our, that's.
But with all the public services that we have, that the same people and the same facilities provide, like our trails and our public restrooms and our search and rescue. All those are public services that should not be built into our rate and fee schedules for a slip, for example.
Have it written down in our operating, the way we operate financially, that revenue collected, public revenue collected will be prioritized to go on public activities. So in other words, when you collect public tax dollars, those dollars will go towards all the public things and that's what the public thinks.
And that's our responsibility.
Yeah. This can be deleted. I don't think it's helpful.
I, I would argue that because when the public district, everything we do is public responsibility.
I, I would, yeah, even the marina services are.
All right. Can we move on, folks?
But wait, are we deleting that?
This should be deleted.
Okay.
The picture for. Virginia was taking, talking about financial stewardship.
As a goal.
We need a goal for financial stewardship.
What are the elements? What's on your mind? Just say a few more words.
We're following all the mandatory requirements from the state that we're, uh, our budget is proper and that our audits are conducted properly and on time. And we get good budget result, uh, audit reports. Financial, I would get, put in, you know, et cetera, slash, financial stewardship and then we can work.
Okay. We'll, we'll write that. We don't need to.
I think that's important.
That's why we, we definitely need something in there that shows that.
Not hit them in one, any particular year, but it's such a, we're not working.
They're not.
I'll have a, a work plan developed to support that goal.
Yeah. Staff will have a work. Action and collaboration. Um, any comments down to the objectives?
Challenges and opportunities. Well, though we're focusing on Oyster Point, it's a very solid goal, but the district would like to take over Coyote Point. So do you say extend to the Oyster Point community or extend to balance of the county or let's see.
Just get rid of the definition of Oyster Point, say it needs to extend to all.
Yes.
So extend countywide.
Yeah.
Okay. Good.
Now, do we, uh, around the term marketing to develop an actual marketing, uh, plan, strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats? Is that something we're thinking about doing?
If it work that we're going to do, that's going to come next from staff.
Answer to that is yes. I've already been working with, with our tenants.
Let's look at the objectives. Uh, first one, visitors and users throughout the county understand the services the district provides, where to learn more and how to get their questions answered. Um, and again, it doesn't mean every person in the county knows, you'll decide in work plan how much money and effort you invest and how far that reaches. Two, stakeholders understand and support the district and its activity. So the first one was they just understand your services and where to learn more, how to use your services. This one is they support your activities. So like when you need political support or, and support for changes, people, you know, will back you and not say you're, you know, fight you. Um, three, there is improved public understanding and awareness of ocean environmental issues, the fishing industry, and other harbor and coastal issues.
Ocean and bay consistently.
Okay. Um, ocean and bay issues.
So I'm saying keep the harbor and add ocean and bay.
Take other out, just say in harbor.
And water, right? Because in case we need the broad mix. And water, right? Because we need the broad mix.
Who you want to.
I'm going to make sure it's consistent everywhere. I'll look at all the ways we've done it. I just took a note to kind of.
I feel sorry, Martin.
Yeah, yeah, you'll reorder. The next one, the district's board and staff develop and maintain productive mutually beneficial collaborative partnerships with the county municipalities, regulators, businesses, environmental groups and other stakeholders.
A really good goal.
And then last, the district supports harbor and marina events, businesses and services with marketing and public relations. And that relates to 1.4 where we have a similar one. We're just putting it here to make, so it makes sense. Any comments to any of these? Are these good? Do we need another one or change one?
There are reasons we don't have state, comma, county. Or state.
If we don't have state, we could.
State, comma, county, comma municipalities.
Which one are you on?
Well, that would be the other one.
Just a list of collaborative groups.
State, county.
Tribal. You were in the core. You did tribal.
We really, we work with.
Hey, guys. We've almost gotten to the end. Here's the last thing we have today. Monitoring, reporting, oversight and accountability. This is a list of things that you could do. You don't have to do all of them to make sure that you report on the plan, you monitor the plan, you implement it. There's roles for the board and the staff. And they're kind of grouped in categories. And any comments on these? I have a few comments on a few parts of this, but I'll let you comment first.
Say ensure all staff members understand the plan.
Include accomplishment of strategic priorities and performance reviews for the general manager and leadership team or management team or whatever you call it. Usually the non-management staff, and I don't know if you have collective bargaining units. Yeah, that can be a lot of work and you get into contract, like I delete that probably.
Yeah.
And same with cascade the plan. I'd probably, for your size district, cascade the plan. Not cascade the plan down to departments and teams unless you really want to do that. It can just, meaning each department comes up with their work plans to meet the objectives and even individuals in some districts. I don't know what kind of units you have, how you subdivide your organization.
It's too small. It gets down to, it's too small for.
Yeah, you're too small. I would delete the whole cascade thing.
Okay, yeah, I think that's right.
I think that's too much for us.
Cascade down to the leadership team.
Yeah, and it's, that's built in.
Pretty there.
Yeah. And then I think the rest at least makes sense to me.
I have a question.
Yeah, go ahead. Yeah.
The number two says the board and its committees consider strategic plan goals and objectives. I guess that kind of goes with number one. But so like, are our resolutions, you think that we approve going to be in one? Are you saying that all of those have to be in line with the?
No, what I'm saying is, like saying the agenda packet, let's say you have a work item for marketing for this, for the restaurants or something. You would just note that this helps fulfill objective 1 point X. So that you relate the work that you do and what the boards approving and reviewing back to the plan. But every single thing won't go back to the plan because you do things that have nothing to do with the plan.
We can add another header in all the staff reports that says strategic plan, just like we do for policy.
Anyway.
Yeah, I do, yeah.
Act two.
It's just so you recognize that you're working, this relates back to the strategic plan. That's what this is, yes. Yep. But only the ones that actually do reference it. Some won't and then there'd just be a blank there. Like Jim said, you'd have a new little category where you just fill it in.
Changing the signature cards every year may not be a reference back to the strategic plan.
I don't know.
And then review and update the plan. The board holds a brief workshop early in the budget development process to review progress on the strategic plan and considering making appropriate adjustments to the plan. In other words, in the beginning of the budget season, as you're starting to contemplate your budget for the coming year, you look at your strategic plan and say, do we want to change any of the priorities, the goals, the work items? Because then they've got to be funded in the next budget. So it's just, you get your annual report on the plan around the time of your budget development. So you can tie it together and that goes back to Julie, what you were asking. That way you'll be able to line up that the plan is going to relate to the budget and it's not just words that aren't real.
But it's, it's a telephonic municipal finance office group. And one of the things they were talking, needless to say, there are experts who can help us. I think our own team is probably better. But because I'm sure there's easy software that actually takes a look at your budget and your strategic plan and your goals and your values and so on. And creates a way of seeing that your values and your goals are being met in the budget. Because there's, there's mission, I would call it mission slip as emergencies and higher priorities get moved around in the budget and you kind of forget some of your longer-term goals. And I would like to see Michelle and Julie and the rest of the finance team sort of investigate the software that's available so we can, we can have a methodology for making sure that our budget and our strategic plan are in sync. Instead of, you know, you've got them going off this way and then your budget's going off this way and pretty soon you're going, what's going on?
I think Julie does that. You're required to do that to win that financial board you do. It's explicitly already required in your budget document.
Again, for a future board, I'd like a mention of that. Because a lot of times, things that are already in place slip away. You've seen it as, as other priorities or board members or staff move in and they, why am I doing this? And then nobody knows it's being done or not being done. And so I'd like to have people be able to call it out and say, all right, where, where is that photograph that says we've checked this? Maybe if you continue this way, you're going to be forgetting to fix it.
Okay, I took a note of that. We have one more thing to do. I lied to you and I led you astray.
Yeah, the big picture.
We have a last exercise to do, this little exercise. It's a little different. We have time to do it within our allotted time.
I love the Latin one.
The Latin one. Oh, yeah. That's just at the end, we'll put, put it all in a one-page format for you. Also, so you can see, I just didn't fill it in with real words until we're done.
Last page, I appreciate the promotion to general district manager, but I think.
Did I, did I make you just?
It should be advised.
Well.
Add me to the commissioners.
And who is Chris Tom?
Are we doing, is this the big picture view of the strategic?
We're going to do that. Fix that cover. So I want to pass this out to you. You need to fill out on your own. Quick forward questions there. We just went through the plan. Is there anything missing? Are there any goals or objectives missing from the plan or anywhere else? Second, one or two or a couple highest priorities to you? And why would that be? And then third, what is our strategy? And strategy is used in different terms, but what I mean is, I want to give you an example of strategy. Not for everything, just for the priority, whatever your priority is. What the strategy is, is kind of how you go about maneuvering through the world the way it is. Like, I'll give you an example of a couple strategies. When Airbnb was starting, they were not selling any rentals. People weren't taking their houses. And the guys who founded Airbnb said, what we think is wrong is how we're presenting the homes. So they personally went out with cameras and went to that not very many homes they had and took pictures of them and then tried to guide how they were presented on the website. And sales shot up. And then they hired professional photographers to do it and then they trained the people who have properties. You know, they had systems to extend that. That was the strategy. They're like, why aren't we making any sales? We think it's poor presentation. We think we've got a great thing, but it's not presented well. Or example, you've probably heard of Toyota. You know, their strategy is we can build cars at lower cost and high quality by this great production system we have. Or a more getting closer to home, a water district, I know it happened to be an agricultural water district. They were in a big drought and in their strategic plan, the number one priority was water supply. But as they talked about priorities, they realized that they were in, they had been in some big fights with their neighbors over some different things. And then they changed their priority to be, let's make peace with our neighbors because we won't be able to make water supply agreements while we're fighting. So our top priority, even though it's really water, it has to be making peace with our neighbors because we're not making progress. And we could go on and on. So when you look at whatever your highest priority is, is there any specific thing that you face as a district that needs to be overcome? And how would you go about doing it? What would you focus on? And then finally, if, once you're done with this plan, three or five years from now or whatever it is, what's going to be new or different? What are you going to be doing for the first time? What's there going to be more of or less of? What are you going to stop doing? What are the key changes that will occur in the district at the end of this? And not every change, sort of the bigger ones. Maybe especially around your priorities. So please fill those out and we'll take a few minutes to do that and we'll talk about it. And I don't want to take all that time for you to write because I want all of us to discuss it. Yeah. There it is. You can see it here though. And let me crank it a little so you can see the whole thing. Like a couple of people are done. Just maybe brought your pen. Minutes, can you wrap in a couple of minutes? We there? All right. Is anything missing? Does anyone have anything missing? Yeah.
I would like to see more space or concentration on also would like to see. We had some general, very general things. I'd like to see a specific column. To remodel.
Somebody has their.
Don't worry, I'm a very benevolent person.
So more concentration on marketing. Is there something missing there or just the language description of it or what do you?
Since this is a, a general thing, I would like to see more suggestion. There was, I think I saw one comment about marketing or public relations and it ties in with if I would like to see an increasing legislative legislative and public outreach outreach to sell the importance of the harbor district to San Mateo County and the area and the state to get more possibly more money certainly.
Good. Anyone else?
Also want to encourage commercial and recreational boating. I don't know if that goes into marketing or how, how we're going to encourage more of that. And then when I look at the mission statement where we added the educational component, the ocean science center, however that pans out. I see that we have it in our vision, but I don't see any particular goals. You know, what we're going to do. With the ocean science center of the educational, I forget what the vision set up there that we changed it.
Education?
Public education. Maybe there's something in here and I just went through this really, really fast. So there might be stuff in here that go back to that, but.
My understanding of where the board was going with that was people turn the work plan over time. And it's understood that you right now are thinking you're going to have the ocean center. But it was put under the broader category of education for now, and it will appear in the work plan and work item. And maybe it will happen or maybe it won't and other things will also happen around education.
Because there are goal in here about like looking at our educational opportunities or something like that.
Okay, good. Good. Anyone else? Tom, I think Tom, you were just.
I've got numerous points down here that might be going down the wrong road for all. But enhancing the boatyard setup and development. And along with that, for instance, increased storage of commercial gear at HMB airport. So we take that over, but we could be leasing a lot of space there. For crab pots, vessels, different things. And then vessel maintenance that happen by airport. Can we get a lift, transport boats? Because you probably need a minimum of half an acre, maybe an acre when people pull their boats. They want to take time to work on them. That takes some time. Can we do a boat lift at the base of the pier or at the launch ramp, something, what do you call those things that lift the boats?
Travel lift?
Yeah, travel lift. So we thought about getting a travel lift to help people maintenance here. Very frequent for people drive all the way to Santa Cruz on the water because they've got to travel with having to go around the bay. All the boatyards have, we have kind of an antique railroad system that may or may not be too dependable, but something if you're saying what's new or different. Focusing on a travel lift and then utilizing extra space at Heflin Bay Airport.
Okay. Some of these are work items and some of them are maybe objective. I, I took notes on all of them and I think the law ideas we'll keep and get them. At least under consideration. Yep. And you want to, Virginia?
Yeah. So two things that we hadn't really talked about, but it goes to potential revenue stream. As Julie mentioned, in terms of the enterprise part decreasing over time, and I've noticed that too, since I've been on this board since 2017, 2015. I was thinking, how can we work with the state legislators to increase the tax percentage allocation? That I, I think it may be Prop 13 money, I think, that the counties get. And I think school districts get some, special districts, cities. So can we increase the harbor districts percentage, even if it's, I don't know, what is it that we get now, like 0.2% something? So small, so like under 1%, I think. I mean, like, could we get 1% for example, right? So, and especially, I think we can make the case that it's necessary, but I think that if we can work with our state legislators, that might be helpful. And then also CSDA, Catherine's been keeping me up to date on this. California Special District Association is working to get a federal designation or just federal CSDA or SBA.
National.
National, yeah. Organization in place so that special districts would be eligible for federal funding. So whatever CSDA needs to get that done and you know, the support that we can give CSDA, I think would be good. I'm just trying to think of ways to bring in money that's not as limiting as what we're facing now.
There's someone else?
Okay. So the, the way I looked at it, I didn't look at anything missing at that point, but I started looking at the highest priorities.
Wait, is there anything missing?
And answer with what Virginia said, but we're kind of already doing it. I just wrote it up. Getting additional funds from county via taxes, law enforcement grant, portion of sales tax. And then the 1% county tax on boats. So we're both saying the same thing in just different words.
Mine, mine's probably less specific. Mine would be generalized.
Before we get there, anything else that we need to add?
Yes, I thought it's kind of changing gears to like the value inspection.
I would piggyback on that too, because one of the things that I think we can work on is enforcement of some of the things that we need to do. And so the values could be well, it's like collections and enforcing the leases. But yeah, I, I hear what you're saying.
What if we're still going to think of adding something like that?
I think it's PR.
That's why.
We probably, we probably already do, you know?
Yeah, but it's just.
Recognizing that you already do it and including that you want.
Well, so that's, there is a section in here that had respect as one of the bullets, which I think I do.
That made me want to know about value.
Page nine.
Number four.
Well, it's page nine and it's the last from respect. I was thinking that we moved that up. Would that work for you, Boomer? Or actually it may not because it's a little different. You're talking about, sounds like respect in terms of interaction with our tenants, for example, right?
I don't know if that goes in values. I think that's just a staff thing that we need to do.
Again, I think that I'm thinking if this is a sales document and so it's telling the public that we have respect and it's about.
If that quality work, would that fit better, Boomer? I mean, we serve the public and they deserve our best. We're okay. And then, and maybe add page nine, page nine, yeah.
Out there, but.
This is all geared towards how we also interact with each other too. And so what Boomer is saying, I don't think is really reflected on page nine.
Oh, but we could certainly.
How do we add on to one?
Certainly add respect back with a whole different explanation, definition proposed value.
Okay.
I mean, I know it's obvious.
Are you seeing anything odd out there, Boomer? Cause we're obviously not there every single day. Are you hearing anything about that? Yeah, no, that's why I'm asking you.
If you don't mind, excuse me, just because of the time.
Got it. Okay.
Let's have this conversation another time.
Okay.
What I'd like to do now is just hear everyone's highest priority. Let's just, if you don't, we'll just start at one end of the room and go. And let's hear them and we can't have a hundred highest priorities. I'm hoping to land on a couple here. So let's hear what you would do.
Infrastructure? Quality.
Quality infrastructure. Okay. Well, how about the next one?
Industry needs to improve visitor support requirements and needs to establish, improve, expand public education activity.
Boomer?
I just.
Hey, Brian. Fiscal responsibility.
Fiscal responsibility.
Oh, it's too many things, you know, looking for revenue, making sure we're efficient with the dollars we get.
Hey, Catherine.
Income, finance and risk assessment. Income, finance and risk assessment.
What's risk?
Risk assessment means when we're doing our financial plan, which we already do, but I wanted to continue. We look at the risks out there for the next couple couple, couple of years.
Good. Virginia?
So my is be stewards of public tax dollars and fulfill the harbor district's mission. And some of the things I brought up before is like increase the enterprise section of the budget. Work with the state legislators to increase tax allocation percentage. Enhance coast site search and rescue and allocate and seek funds for SAR and public safety. And infrastructure, new and old maintain, maintain new infrastructure possibly and maintaining the old one, you know, some not so old, but kind of what we've got to.
My name is Johnson Pierce.
I'm here, Johnson Pier and Search and Rescue. I'm pillar point retail center.
Add that too.
And that's what, that's what I would say.
Okay, I mean, I think that you guys are all landing really tightly on the same thing. It's all about money, right?
It's, it is at the end of the day.
About money to do the things that you described, it sounds like infrastructure. The things that were mentioned were infrastructure, search and rescue, and a little less education, but. Any comments on that, anything that, when I summarize, that would go off wrong, or clarity on that?
I, so I also believe in the education piece of this, Martin, but I think that we have done some, a lot of that in terms of, you know, like, having the signs out there, having our you know, these festivals, or whatever, there's a lot of public engagement, and I agree that, you know, this Ocean Science Center is really important. But I think that the things that I've mentioned are not as as visible as they should be. I think education's been very visible, I don't think, you know, like, working with the state legislators to increase our tax allocation percentage has never really been discussed.
Good. On, on the strategy, is there any particular strategy that's needed for the revenue part of it? You've talked, I think the one thing you've talked about is increasing enterprise revenue, that seems to be the big thing that we're looking at, and then taxes, if you can manage that, secondary thing.
It kind of falls in line with what Virginia was saying, is that we need some strong political support for a lot of this, but it could be from the federal level, but certainly state and county level to help us push for funds.
At least for the state level, state and federal, it could be our best bet right now, in terms of achieving what I'm thinking we can, hopefully go to.
I think to get there, we need to market, so we can create public support.
Yeah.
And we then, and we can actually, then that way is to get in touch with our heavy users, and ask them to contact our politicians soon, so we need cities, cities, and, and the county.
Yeah, right.
And and mostly with the other organizations like CSDA, like the other Harbor districts, and CMAT, and all of those. And, so I think, that's, that's publicity and marketing, or all of the education, yes.
There's a way, the thought is that. How many state-federal relationships to enhance funding opportunity?
And we don't want to say every, like, I'm not looking for everything that'll be more different, but what's the big what's going to look more different, what we can stop doing because of all of this, or focus on.
My mind, when, was, I've been on the district for four years, and I don't ever remember the board sitting down and kind of reevaluating the strategic plan, or taking a look at the strategic plan, or taking a look at the mission statement, you know, during the course of business. Possibly because, I mean, we meet, we need monthly as board, and those meetings need to be public, so there's kind of a natural see to kind of, let's concentrate on the thing, the project, the thing at hand, rather than, you know, dredge up stuff that we've done in the past. So, I don't know, it just seems logical that we would maybe structure going forward to set up a time of the year when we would actually take a minute and review what we said in the strategic plan. And, okay, where are we at, and kind of, maybe it's course adjustment, or course correction, but something that kind of forces us to do that.
This plan will call for doing that at least once a year. Right.
Right, I think that's a good.
And I think part of the problem with the last one was, the district was struggling mightily to even function with between managers, and it, yes, there was a strategic plan created, but I'm not sure it was considered really legitimate, it was kind of poorly born child of all the.
Like going through the motions.
Yeah, yeah, but it didn't.
I mean, it gave us something, I mean, because Steve was, I think, there at the time. But the process was just, I mean, you had a completely different board.
Yeah, it was quite difficult. Anything else on what's new or different? Yes. Oh, sorry. I missed someone else.
I go back to the airport, so a couple of different ways we could work there, increased storage, commercial gear at the airport, vessel maintenance at the airport, one thing that we haven't looked at that just popped into my mind, could we trade the West Trail to the county for a couple acres at the airport that we could use for our own?
That written down on your piece of paper there?
Not the trade thing, that just occurred to me.
Yeah, I think, I think for me, the biggest new thing is that, you know, the amount of visitors that we're now getting to the coast in the region and the harbor, and I think there's definitely a view of the board that desire to enhance the visitor services, whether it becomes the retail center, or if it's the educational opportunities, more recreational opportunities, there's a huge influx of people coming to the coast, and certainly coming to this harbor to, and one, they want to do things and see things, and they're interested in seeing, let's do that for them.
Will feel like it's their own instead of the county agent thing, does that make any sense? Having more board visibility a little, I think, is I mean, in terms of a governance and management standpoint, I don't even know how to say this, because I just, I just thought about it, but.
While you're thinking what needs to be.
Okay, go.
Thank you. Is that, all the people who are coming and as I said, missing, public relations and marketing. And it's not just, it needs to partly get people here, but it's also, we should be get, and this is where the public relations part comes out, we should be putting our events and things. We're doing it to a limited extent, but maybe there are bigger ways to do it about the events, I mean, kudos to Jim and staff, because this district, post-COVID, had nothing to attract people. Now we've got the Landed Boat Show, we've got roads, we're going to have an ocean safety, and we've been talking about expanding these things from, it was once a year, now it's three times this coming year, and maybe up to quarter, a quarterly basis, public will be more aware, has kind of draw to get here, and also we're putting out articles and stuff into the newspapers, so that we can we can take the attitude that as long as they spell our name right, you don't care what they say about it. We're at least getting noticed.
I think the notice is important, too, I, I just. Stop, I'm finishing my thought, I'm piggybacking on everyone.
Because I interrupted you, that's fair.
The, um I guess like in terms of board, so like, if you look at the various elected positions, the Harbor District actually probably is the largest and company representing, representation, right?
Except for the.
No, no, I mean on the coast.
Oh.
In this, in this area in particular. And, and so I just, I don't know, I just want people to feel like that we're accessible, and that we're representing them for what I think for most people is an important resource. Does that make any sense at all?
No, you're, we're all struggling with, we need to be seen more, we need to find more ways to draw people to us, and we need to be convinced that, hey, this is for.
That we're important, too.
Can I jump in here?
Yes.
Have captured this, I do think it made sense.
Okay.
Just went out at 1:58. Our timing goes to two. I'll sit here as long as you want to, but normally I like to have meetings on time.
Everybody who wants to can leave, and the rest of us will knock this out.
Can we draw it to a close? Is there?
What's, when are you bringing this back to us?
It does a little bit, how much change I need to be with Jim on the board, it doesn't sound like too dramatic. Maybe, at the end of April, maybe he'd come back for the meeting.
I think, I think that works, and everybody else can speak after me, so I'm not trying to be the last word, but one of the things that I think we need to be cognizant of, in all of this, is if we have the staff and if we don't, how we get the income to hire consultants. Don't need to increase employment.
Maybe the last word. Someone may have 30 seconds for one more last word.
I'll move to adjourn, you can.
I'll second it.
We all get the last word.
Thank you.
Thank you, Martin. Oh, yeah, see, and.